I would like to welcome everyone to the August 27th, 2020 work session of the Henrico County School Board. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Is there motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
They're moved by Mrs. Auburn. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Shea. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. The agenda is approved. The next item on our agenda is the public forum. This is the time where citizens are invited to address the school board on any matter of concern about the school division. Citizens have signed up in advance and speakers will be given two minutes to address the school board. We will follow the signup sheet. Those who have signed up to speak cannot relinquish their spot to someone else. We ask that each speaker come to the microphone and clearly state your name and neighborhood or school affiliation. To assist you in tracking your time, there is a timekeeping system that is on the platform of the stage. Speakers will have a two-minute time limit. The light will begin green as you begin your remarks and the yellow light means you have one minute remaining. And we ask that you please stop speaking when the light turns red. The school board, as always, is here to hear from you today. The community and speakers should speak directly to the board. Unfortunately, we will not be responding to speakers and we appreciate your attendance here this afternoon and for providing your input. Due to health considerations, the maximum occupancy for public attendance is 44 and a total of two citizens have signed up in advance to address the board members. Seats have been reserved for staff and media in attendance. The first person that has signed up to speak today is Ms. Erica Taylor. Ms. Taylor, are you here? Ms. Taylor, are you here? Ms. Taylor is not here, evidently. Second person signed up is Zenab Bowens. Zenab Bowens, are you here? Seeing as that Ms. Taylor and Zenab Bowens is not here, are not here, that ends our public forum. Next item on the agenda is our closed session. Closed session is for our ability to discuss matters covered under items A1 and A2 of Section 2.2-733711 of the Code of Virginia. As a minute pertaining to the assignment, appointment, performance, disciplining, and release of contract for specific school board employees, including a personnel hearing for employee case number 18-19-E-9, and the consideration of a request for waiver of a tuition. Is there motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
They're moved by Mrs. Consella. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Atkins. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. We will now go into closed session and we will reconvene the work session at the conclusion of our closed meeting. Closed session. Next item on our agenda is the certification of closed session. Is there motion to certify the closed session?
So moved.
They're moved by Mrs. Auburn. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Shea. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. The closed session has been certified. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. For the first item, I am seeking your approval for the request of waiver of tuition for student case number 20-21-TW-01, and the name of the student is protected under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act.
Is there motion to approve the waiver of tuition for student case number 20-21-TW-01?
So moved.
They're moved by Mrs. Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Consella. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. The waiver of tuition is approved.
Thank you. Next, I'm seeking your approval regarding the petition for licensure revocation in employee case number 18-19-E-9, and then that would authorize me, as superintendent, to forward the petition to the State Board of Education.
Is there motion to approve the petition for licensure revocation in employee case number 18-19-E-9?
So moved.
And to authorize the superintendent to forward the petition to the State Board of Education. Ms. Auburn, would you like to make a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, madam. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Shea. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. The motion, the petition for licensure revocation is approved.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. For the next item, Dr. Teigen will be coming forward with a number of guests to share our health committee update. And for this item, you'll recall, as the school board made the decision to move forward with the virtual format, our predominantly virtual format for the first nine weeks, we did discuss the recommendation that we would be involving our SHAB as well as health experts to be able to bring back an update to the board on which health metrics we were recommending we monitor, as well as other information related to that. So, Dr. Teigen, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairman Cooper, members of the board, and Dr. Cashwell. It is my pleasure to be here this afternoon, and joining me are Robyn Gilbert, who was our School Health Services Supervisor, and Dr. Melissa Veray, Deputy District Director from the Virginia Department of Health for the Henrico and Richmond Health Districts. Together, we will present the board with the Henrico County Public Schools Health Committee And here's the agenda for today's presentation. We will provide a high-level overview of the Health Committee's charge and the committee representation, share the goals of the committee, identify key metrics and trends, and then discuss next steps. The Health Committee consists of 16 individuals. These individuals represent the Henrico Health District, the community, the Student Health Advisory Board, known as SHAB, and Henrico County Public Schools. The goal of the work of the Health Committee was twofold. One goal was to provide a responsive analysis to maintain the health and safety of our staff and of our students. The second goal was to provide a process by which safe instruction can be continued throughout the approach continuum during the COVID-19 pandemic. And at this point, I would like to reintroduce Dr. Melissa Veray, Deputy Director of the Henrico and Richmond Health Districts. She's going to share a new data dashboard that provides information about the current pandemic status within Virginia, and more specifically, within the central Virginia region. They have created essentially a weekly pandemic report for schools, and she will be highlighting that for you today.
Good afternoon. Thanks for having me. So VD... Let me get closer to the microphone. VDH has worked to build a metric... Can you all hear me through my mask all right? Great. VDH has worked to put a metric together that combines multiple different measures into a single composite metric. And like all metrics, it's not perfect, and just like the rest of our COVID response, it will continue to evolve as our response evolves, but it presents us with a tool, in a toolbox, to approximate what's going on both in the region and within the Henrico community, which is going to be a big driver for what challenges and what considerations we have with regards to reopening schools. So I want to go into, and someone can stop me if I go into too much detail, but I'm going to go a little bit into the anatomy of the metric itself, what goes into the metric, how things were decided, so you understand what we're talking about when we're presenting these numbers. This, what you see... Good. What you see here is you see a state map, and you see that it's broken up into a couple of regions, and that within each region, we have a burden and a trend and a transmission extent. It's regional by VDH Health Planning Region, because that's the level at which some of these metrics are most robust, and in some cases, they're only available at the regional level. I will also talk a little bit about Henrico measures, but the most robust metric is this one that we have at the region level. To look at what drives it, it's calculated by a number of different component measures, first being the case incidence by day. So what that means is how many new cases are we seeing every day? Because if we're seeing fewer cases every day, that's a good sign. If we're seeing an increasing number, a high burden of cases, that tells us what's going on in our community. It looks at the percent positivity, meaning how well are we testing and how many are we detecting? Are there outbreaks occurring and how many of them? This is a measure of the outgoing, ongoing outbreaks that we at the local health district are investigating at any given time. And then, how is it affecting our healthcare system? Because I think we all understand that one of the reasons we needed to flatten the curve is because if we overwhelm our healthcare systems, a lot of different things are going to fall down, not just our COVID-related health. When each of these component metrics hits a threshold, it adds points to an overall burden score. And then, each of these, and they have, we have looked at the different, where each score would fall in terms of a high, moderate, low, and then also assigned a trend. So where are things going? Is the incidence increasing? Is it decreasing? Is it kind of bumping around and fluctuating? Over the last 14 days, it kind of, so we have both a measure of how high it is and where is it going to help us to understand what is going on in the community. Now, what this does here is, right here, we have the component, the number breakdowns. Like I said, each of those component metrics drives a number, and this is the number for this week. And we have broken down these numbers into high burden, moderate burden, low burden, and then increasing trend, fluctuating trend, and decreasing trend. So for example, if you were in a moderate burden, but you were increasing for the last two weeks, that's concerning that we have substantial transmission. If you have a high burden, regardless of what, unless you're, you know, regardless of whether or not you're increasing or fluctuating, you're seeing substantial transmission. If you have, so you can use the two together to determine where, we use the two together to determine where we're at. Now, where we can go into, but where, I know that our people care the most about what's going on in Henrico. I need to present this at the regional level because that's where the data are best, but we can put this into context for Henrico using measures for Henrico. Now, there isn't enough in the way of numbers to build that same kind of metric for Henrico. We just, some of these data aren't available at the locality level, and some of these things just aren't, they're not going to be robust with a number, I mean, I'm glad we don't have the numbers to make it more, to make it more robust, but our numbers just aren't high enough, that's good, to really bear out a really solid metric. But we can use these component, these component measures to kind of help understand where are we compared to the region. And so what, and we, so what, these are, these are the three metrics, or the three measures that are part of what feed into that larger metric, except specific to Henrico County. So for example, with the cases, the Y-axis here starts out about mid-April and goes day by day measuring the case incidence, that is, the new cases that we're seeing every day. It is smoothed out, so there is, it is a moving average, so it's not as bumpy as the raw data are, but we use this to understand where we are with regards to our case incidence. What you see here is that for Henrico, as of the 24th, while we were seeing, we did see a recent peak, we are starting to see perhaps some suggestion that we might be coming down on the other side of the peak. That won't have been reflected in that regional metric yet because that metric hasn't been, doesn't, this includes data from the 24th and is updated daily, whereas that regional metric, to be more stable, is weekly. We also look at percent positivity, and we look at outbreaks. Now, you might ask, why do we care about outbreaks? We care about outbreaks because that, outbreaks are a source of amplification. That is where it enters and it spreads. So whether, and I know that in Henrico, many of our outbreaks have been in congregate facilities, have been in long-term care facilities, and you might ask, why does that matter for the schools? Because A, it's a source of amplification, and B, those employees are affected, and those employees are sometimes part and parcel of those outbreaks. Those employees are the family, the spouses, and the parents of our students. So it matters. And, I think those are, but the three of these together show us kind of where is Henrico in the context of the larger regional whole. The regional whole does say that we have substantial community transmission. I will say that this local does not, is not necessarily discordant with that, but that there might be signs that we might, you know, that we will continue to watch that might say that we might not be there forever. By forever, I mean next week, week after. And that's perhaps until we have more questions, and we might, and I'm happy to entertain questions now, but you might want to hear from Robyn first.
Thank you, Dr. Veray. Chairman Cooper, members of the board, and Dr. Cashwell. The metrics and trends the healthcare, health committee will monitor and use to inform their recommendation to the superintendent and to the school board include the following: the case incidence rate per 100, the PCR percent positivity, the outbreaks per 100,000, and the trends associated with these three metrics. The availability of the necessary personal protective equipment needed to ensure the health and safety of staff and students, and our staff considerations. So what does this mean for Henrico County Public Schools? And how does it relate to our continuum of reopening approaches? I would like to use a graphic that has been shared at the last two school board meetings. It is a continuum of how we envision taking a measured strategic approach to returning to full in-person instruction, moving from predominantly virtual learning with limited in-person opportunities for selected groups to larger groups of students back in their classrooms. The burden levels calculated by the Virginia Department of Health each week have been added to provide a visual of the starting approach the Health Committee will use to begin their conversation around moving from one approach to the other. Substantial burden would align with approach two, and then the availability of the needed personal protective equipment and staff considerations would be used to determine the appropriateness of limited in-person instruction moving forward. Moderate burden would align with approach three, and again, the availability of needed personal protective equipment and staff considerations would be used to determine this appropriateness of transition to the alternate day hybrid option moving forward. Low burden would align with approach four, and again, the availability of needed personal protective equipment and staff considerations would be used to determine the appropriateness of transitioning to most, if not all, students returning to school. The Health Committee will meet every two weeks to review the metrics and trends provided by the Virginia Department of Health. The committee will also review feedback from teachers about how well the health plan and the mitigation strategies are playing out due to the, excuse me, out in the classrooms. We would also look at daily attendance rates. The committee will provide an overview of the data each school board meeting. Dr. Teigen and I will be providing that update to include data from the Henrico Health Department and the availability of personal protective equipment at each school board meeting. Furthermore, we will bring forth a recommendation from the Health Committee for the second nine weeks by October 22nd, school board meeting. This timeframe will provide transition for our staff and families. I would like to thank everyone who has participated in and continues to contribute to this process. While there are no easy answers, the team was committed and continues to be committed to ensuring ways to safely get students and teachers back to school.
And we are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Teigen, Dr. Veray, and Ms. Gilbert. I'm going to start to my left from Ms. Atkins. Any questions? Ms. Shea?
I have a few questions. Thank you for your tremendous work putting this together. As you know, you know, over the past few months, my thing has been quantitative metrics, quantitative metrics, so I really appreciate you bringing these. I have quite a few questions, so if you'll bear with me, per usual. Dr. Veray, and thank you for your detailed explanation of how you calculate burden. That was really helpful for me. Can you give us a little insight on how it was determined where the green, yellow, red, orange, et cetera, line, you know, buckets are?
Yeah. I think there's, and I, the first caveat that I'll bring is that it was the, we are, well, caveat one is that we are looking to actually adjust it so it's not quite so stoplight green, red, yellow, but a little more gradated, but without that stop-go kind of connotation. But to that end, where do these lines come from? It's a combination of where are, if you look at the combine, the iterative combinations I'm trying to say this without getting into too much detail. So if you look at the combination of where, where each weighted metric would lie on a, if you, all the different iterations of the combinations of each component led to this, this weighting, and this thing would give you a scale of activity, right? And where it falls is, where those fall and how those determine, I really wish I'd had a diagram. I should have had a diagram for this. Would tell you kind of where, oh, thank you. So if you look at where this, where these lines are drawn depends on the, how the different components will impact the scale. So for example, if you have a very high case incidence that's weighted very highly, that will, because we care a lot about the, how many cases we're seeing every day, that will, that will have a potential scale of, you know, zero to 12, that it can add to this scaling. So if you go, if you do that for each of the metrics, then you can generate a, this is the probability, these are, this is this, this is the, this is the world that we could live in, and this is, and we know that we care about a case incidence of 10 for 100,000 because we know, we don't, that's, don't, different experts, Harvard, CDC, and others have weighed in, and there isn't 100% consensus about which, is there a case incidence that we care the most about? I think it's fair to say that there is concern at 10 for 100,000. There's concern above that, and whether or not that's red or orange, I will tell you honest, or blue or darker blue, whatever, is a point that is still under consensus, but I will say that 10 for 100,000 is already a, is already an indicator for where activity in the community is concerning for its impact for schools, for other facilities, for other community members. And then you apply that kind of thinking to each of the metrics.
Yep. So when you talk about weighting the metrics, would you say this case incidence is weighted the most heavily in the algorithm?
Yes.
And then, can you give me just a basic feeling of the weighting of the other ones?
Yeah. So, pop quiz, do I remember where the weights are? I know the case, I know the case incidence is weighted the most highly, about, its current weighting is, I think, I forgot the exact weight it is, it might be six. Things like percent positivity would have a relative, percent positivity and outbreaks are, have a lesser weighting. You know what I'm going to do real quick? I'm going to pop my laptop open. Two seconds.
If you want to keep talking, Dr. Veray, I'll pull it up for you. This might be easier. Sorry for the delay, but it might just be easier to pull it up.
So absolutely. I appreciate your patience with my specific question.
No, no, no. I, I would rather you ask these questions now and have me answer them than wonder and then not trust the numbers. But if you'll just give it two seconds to refresh composite scores. Two seconds. All right. We have a, sorry. My internet is refreshing this. And I'm having an awkward moment of waiting for my internet to refresh. Do you have another question that I can answer while I'm waiting? While I'm waiting for my screen to refresh?
Absolutely. All right. While we're still on this slide, over here on the average composite trend, is that, that 12.6, does it correlate to the 16.0, or is that like a number of fluctuation? They're separate?
Right. So that's different. So let me go back once, so that, the, so you have 16 and 12.6. The 16 is related to this.
Okay.
The 12.6 is related to this.
Right. Okay.
And those two come to that.
Got it.
But those are just the broken down, how we, basically, this tells you, this number tells you how we got to the, those composites that we were talking about on that first slide.
Yeah. Great. Okay.
It's still reloading. Keep going. It's still reloading.
So the 12.6 really has to do with like differentials and how much it's changing?
Right. So that, that's exactly right. So the 12.6 has to do with how much of an, so if it is consistently increasing for the 14 days prior, it's going to be in the 15, it will, in the same way, the scoring will go to increasing. And then if it's bubbling around a little bit, the score will be more in the middle, et cetera, et cetera.
All right. Then, my next question had to do with the next slide on Slide 7. I appreciate you defining the X-axis for us and the time of duration. I see that this is specific to Henrico with the drop-down menu at the top. Is this a publicly available metric?
I want it to. It will be soon.
Okay.
Okay. So I, I, we, many of us in the agency have been working to, to make, we, the intent was never for this not to be public. The intent was always for this to be, for this metric to be used by, and viewed by the public. There have been delays in the approval process, which has gone fairly high up the governmental chain, and it is still pending. But I think the intent was that we, I think VDH understood that we can't wait for all the levels of approval if we know this exists and is usable. I think there were some early tweaks, some pretty heavy tweaks that were made that make me glad that it wasn't public from the very moment it was, you know, inception, but I think at this point, it is, it is better and it is more stable, and we are just not willing to wait for all the levels of approval. So the intent is for it to ultimately be a public resource. It just is not yet, which is why we are in the process. What we will be doing until that time, and after that time even, is on a weekly basis, at the health district, we're putting together kind of a weekly summation. It will include at least these three shots for that week. It will also include some narrative to provide some context around it. We may also include, based on some feedback we've gotten from the schools per se, a couple of other data metrics that we have, that we know that they've expressed interest in providing context. So that should be available once a week. We're hoping to fly that. I was hoping for this coming week. I'm still hoping for this coming week.
All right. I like the positivity. That's the right kind of positivity to have.
I'm aiming for this coming week. So, wait, 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 stop. Going back to weights. Thank you. My internet still doesn't like me. So the case incidence is six.
Okay.
Percent positivity is one. The, the remainders are one, so PPE availability, ICU bed occupation by COVID patients, bed utilization, percent positivity, asset rating, outbreaks will all be evenly weighted, but case incidence is just more heavily weighted.
Thank you. That, and I also think that'll help the public watching understand where these are numbers are coming from and what's affecting it the most, so I really appreciate that.
And I think when you guys are, well, when you're, when we're interpreting this for the public, the other thing to say is that you may say, why doesn't this look exactly like the number that we're seeing out of VDH's? Because sometimes, these are actually moving averages, so they're smoothed some. They should, and they do, because I checked today, pretty much reflect what, you know, for the most, what we're seeing, or what I was seeing, you know, for the same results elsewhere, so they, they're the same data. But sometimes with mathematics, we do things to smooth them, we create polynomial curves and take the tangent to create, you know, this, that, and the others. So the shapes might not look the same every time, but the source data are the same.
Great. So I know we don't live in an epidemiological bubble here in Henrico, and that map you showed of the VDH regions, and you said that's used because that's where we have the most robust data?
In particular for, sorry, I interrupted. But in particular, for hospital, the one, the biggest driver for the regional level data is the hospital utilization. We cannot get that at the regional level. We can only get that, I mean, at the locality level, we can only get that at the regional level.
That is helpful. Okay.
And also, sorry, and the numbers are smaller and more variable at the locality level, so it's not, it'd be much harder to interpret over time. Sorry, I interrupted.
Yeah. So that just, so I'm just looking at, you know, we, in Henrico, we have a lot of staff that live other places.
Right.
So Hanover and Chesterfield and Richmond City, and all of those places are going to heavily affect our school population. But some of these counties, you know, further towards the North Carolina border, for example...
The South Side.
Maybe not so much, right, affect our school population, but it's all part of that regional bubble. But when I hear you talk about the weighted metrics, it's the hospitalization that's the biggest regional factor, and that has a weighting of one.
Yeah.
Okay. So...
Well, like, all of the hospital-related ones, so the PPE availability to hospitals, the ICU bed utilization, and the bed occupation, those are all the hospital-related metrics, and those are the... and those are the ones that are most driver, that are most only available at the region. But yes, they're all one-weighted.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any access to community transmission information that takes out long-term care facilities and correctional facilities?
So, it's not for sharing yet, because I need to tweak it some. So one of the things that, one of the, do we have, things that I have in, on the, in the hopper that aren't ready for primetime yet, one of the things that we have done is, so we have, and I am posing to make public, but I haven't done it yet, because we're not done yet, sorry, is a map of case incidence by census tract, for Henrico and for Richmond. And that is, and then we've done, we've mirrored that, pulling out the long-term care, I have not, primarily long-term care and our nursing home, other, our ALFs, ILFs, in addition to the long-term care folks, in a mirror map. I just have not yet, we are not yet ready to make that primetime from a vetting standpoint. So yes, not, yes and no in that, not yet.
Okay. Great. But it's coming.
Not as soon as that weekly report, though. Not as soon as that weekly report, but yes, it is coming.
Well, because I think when we look at things from a school's perspective, and we're trying to look at what's true transmission within the community and within our school community.
It's a legit question.
Like you pointed out, the employees might overlap, but an outbreak of 200 people in a long-term care facility doesn't mean 200 of our students.
Yeah. No, it's, it's an absolutely legitimate question, is kind of why they, it's kind of why it's already in the hopper.
Awesome. I'm almost done for your part.
I have a question.
So what's our progress on training contact tracers and really having enough in place for 50,000 students plus staff to be back?
You mean contact tracers for schools or contact tracers at my health district?
Well, really for the community at large, but you know, once, but we're gonna need, I would guess, more capacity for contact tracers once we have.
So we've actually hired, so we had, we had this huge push to hire both case investigators and contact tracers. And they're actually slightly different in that the case investigation role is a little more in-depth, and that those are the folks that are eliciting the contact, and the contact tracers, in the way that we've divided it, are the ones tasked with reaching out, finding them, putting them, you know, notifying them about quarantine. We have hired, and I think, with the exception of a couple of trainings we're doing with colleges, or college-specific tracers, we have done, we have completed our onboarding and training of those guys. Where we are still actively hiring, and I'm gonna blank on the proportion, is our case investigators. Those we are still actively hiring, but I am absolutely blanking on the number, but I can get that for you.
Well, I'm encouraged to hear that the contact tracing, hiring and training is going well and moving forward.
Yeah. We are, we're not done, but we are, and there will always be turnover, but we are.
Are those only in, those are only in the primary language of English, or do we have some available for?
Spanish. We, in particular, one of the things that happened fairly early, not early, but felt early on, two months ago now, is we had a fairly big bump in our Latinx population, and it really highlighted for us the vulnerabilities and the importance, the vulnerabilities of the population and the importance of having, honestly, culturally competent contact tracers. And folks who spoke there as a native language, not just Spanish, but in particular areas, there are areas, it's more in Richmond than in Chesterfield than in Henrico, where they're actually indigenous populations in that, in Central America that don't speak Spanish, but they do live in our neighborhoods. So it is an area where we have really, and it's a lesson well-learned, honestly, and we think, and it's been something we have emphasized, but it just highlighted the importance of having culturally competent, and not just fluent, but actual bilingual staff in the contact tracers and our case investigators and our navigators. I can't say that we have all of the indigenous languages covered like we should, but Spanish, we are, we have a, we have a fair chunk.
Fantastic. And last question for you is, if the government, if the governor moves us back in phase, how does this affect all of this?
Yeah. Executive orders are, we are all beholden to executive orders. I don't get the flout executive orders. I will say the importance, the thing that we have tried to highlight is that the governor in all the communications that, that leadership has had with that, with that office, the emphasis has been on, because it, because the state has so many large regions, it doesn't, unless everybody goes back to where we were at the outset, where nobody was observing, you know, if everybody is crazy, not by crazy, I mean, activity is, is out of control, there might need to be. But at its heart, the desire is for it to be regional, because what's going on in Northern is actually very different than what's happening here or in Southwest. And we have seen already that there can be activity that drives the state up that's all focused in Eastern, or is all focused in Northern. And so it doesn't make sense for the whole swath of the state to be impacted unless the entire state is impacted. I would anticipate before that happens, that we will probably, at our region, be impacted long before then.
So it would be possible for us as a region to move back to phase two without the whole state?
Yes.
And so if that was to happen, that would not only affect us, would that also affect private schools as well?
If it's an executive order, it's gonna go across the board.
Okay. Thank you so much for your patience with my detailed questions.
Oh, happy to answer questions.
I have a couple, more school system-based questions.
Thank you. Others might have questions.
Either Dr. Tygen or Ms. Gilbert, can you give us an idea of how many school sites have had positive cases this summer of staff in the building, even with our severely limited staff?
Do you have the school sites?
We have two ancillary departments and school sites. This is gonna be a best estimate, because off the top of my head, I don't have the exact schools, but I want to say we've had about 10 to 12 schools affected. We're currently tracking 24 positive cases, or have had 24 positive cases since July the 15th. Exposures, which means they came in contact with somebody who was positive within that six-foot distance for a greater period of time than 15 minutes or more. 114, and this is at eight o'clock this morning, that, those numbers have gone up since eight. We have eight of those 14 that have been positive with signs and symptoms, and they either did not go get tested, or their test came back negative, understanding that if we get tested too soon, that we may not have enough viral load at that time for the test to actually come back positive. So if our exposure was yesterday and we go today for the test, which we anticipate coming back in three to five days, that test may come back negative because the viral load has not increased sufficiently for the test to react. So we have eight of those right now. And we have an active list as of eight o'clock this morning of currently 65 employees that we are tracking. That means they're either positive, or we have placed them in self-isolation.
And if they come back negative, they still don't come back to work?
That's correct. If, if you have an exposure and you, as I described what a close contact would be, and we place you out on self-isolation for the 14-day period, even if you go get a test and it is that five days or seven days out, your test comes back negative, you're still out for that 14-day period. And we're doing that as collaboration with the health department. We've decided, based on the health plan, that we are going symptom-based over that time, as opposed to having two negative tests. And as you asked about the contact tracing, we have an awesome relationship, collaborative relationship with the health department, and two tracers are actually, or two nurses are assigned with myself and one other nurse that are doing the tracing here in the schools. And the relationship and the feedback is almost immediate.
Thank you for your very thorough job in that. And, and to give the public context, that's with about a dozen or less staff in the building, correct?
Yes.
And that's with by appointment only people coming in the building. And so I know my next question is speculation, because I know we would follow whatever the health department gave us, but this is with essentially an almost empty building. What, what would the response look like had our buildings been full? Like what would the consequence, right? So like if we were back in school and we've got these 10 to 12 sites with positive cases, what would the effect then be as we go forward?
So for every positive case that we experience, you can anticipate there being about 10 exposures that put out. So we're actually doing well, because we're running below that average with the people we're having to put out. So that, to me, means we're doing a better job, getting better every day with our mitigating interventions and strategies. But yeah, I don't know that I could actually give you that number, but I shudder to think right now. It's been a challenge.
I would say that it would probably be an exponential.
Yeah. Let me find anyone.
Sure.
I do that a lot, sorry. I think the one comment, the one caveat that I would give to that is that where you put in, where you guys have put in the strictures that you can to minimize social distancing will minimize and minimizes your opportunity for spread. So even though, and the other part of it that I will say, is that even if wearing a face mask is not perfect, it will still decrease probability. So every barrier that you put for transmission will decrease, even if you have to pull out 10 kids, you may decrease the number of those kids who actually get infected. And that's for me, as, as an EPI, is actually just as important, if not more.
All right. So I've heard a lot of talk about MERV 13 for the air systems and that sort of thing for operations. What, what are we doing with HVAC?
I know that Susan Moore has gone through our buildings, and she has assessed the airflow. I don't know if Mr. Pritchard has additional information, but I do know that that process has been completed by our CNM team, and airflow has been maximized, and any filters that have been installed.
And they're still being evaluated. I mean, it's something that we have to look into, because what we have in place may not work with the newest and upgraded of technology to integrate the two together. You understand what I'm saying with some of our older buildings? So it's just being evaluated and looked at, so.
For those particular filters.
Yes, yes, for those filters.
But she has done an assessment.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Pritchard. All right. I have only two questions left. I promise I'm wrapping up. What is the status of getting our small groups and one-to-one student interaction back into the building, those small groups that we talked about last time?
They are scheduled to come in the third week of school to start bringing in students. And I don't know if Dr. Grant wants to provide additional detail or not.
I was gonna save you a trip up, but feel free to add to, I would just say, yeah, we're aiming for that third week, and I think it will be very specific. Families who have students in those categories should await word from their school. So each school's working on a plan that involves pairing up staff who are able to provide the service with students who would need it, as well as considerations for transportation. So more to come, but we're aiming for that third week to get that rolling.
Thank you. And my last question is, as we look forward towards the second nine weeks, and hopefully seeing a lot of yellow and green, fingers crossed, and we have, and the recommendation, let's say the recommendation comes from the health committee, that we are green for launch to get back into the schools for the second nine weeks, what are our biggest logistical hurdles for the second nine weeks if the health situation allows us to get back in the schools? And are we working to try to solve those now so that we're ready to roll in November?
Yes. I would say probably one of the larger challenges is the supply chain of personal protective equipment and what we need for, you know, for everything to be able to be in place. Some of the medical-grade PPE has been a little harder for us to get, and I also know right now, we are still waiting on glove orders that have been weeks now waiting for us to get them. And so, you know, we need to make sure that we have supplies, not only for the immediate return, but we're looking for a minimum of a four-week supply so that we can sure, ensure that we can continue to order and have everything we need, because we would not want to have to close down schools because we, the supply chain stopped being able to support our needs.
Thank you. And I know that the county has been very proactive in trying to order all sorts of things. You know, we saw that other divisions across the state are having issues with Chromebooks, and we were able to get our order, we were so proactive in ordering those, we were able to already distribute to the family.
And working through the EOC, we have the advantage of the bulk purchasing, you know, but it's, even with that, we have, we have struggled with some of the PPE that, where we'll have a promised date of delivery, and then that will, you know, that will come and go, and we'll have a new date. And so that's something we're watching very, very closely.
The gloves and the N95s are key.
Yeah. The gloves and the N95 masks.
Well, I appreciate all of y'all's patience with all of my questions and my details, and I am, I am finally done with my list. Onto the right.
Thank you, Ms. Agra.
Thank you. And Marcy asked all the right questions, I appreciate that. Makes it easier for the rest of us. I just had, I have two things. First of all, and this is mainly for our staff, what I would really love to see, and I have a number of emails in my inbox asking, how are we going to make our next decision? And so, I mean, I've got two right now, and I was waiting to answer them, hopefully have this today. So what I would love to see us do is, and this is probably more for Andy than anybody else, but have this, some of this information in a press release, so families understand what the metrics are, what are we looking at, how are we gonna base our decision that we have to make? The fact that SHAB is meeting every two weeks for this purpose, and that we will be getting updates at each board meeting, and that you will bring us a recommendation by October 22nd. That is all information that families need, and to answer so many questions that we're getting, you know, from the public, they just, they just kind of want to have a plan. They want to know that we have one. I think it'll give everybody a lot of comfort.
Yes, ma'am. Can I make a point of clarification on that?
Absolutely.
The, the health committee consists of members of SHAB, not all the members of SHAB, but some member.
I'm talking, you're speaking in the mic.
I'm, I'm sorry. Not all the members of SHAB are on the health committee, as well as there are other people from the health department, from VCU, as well as staff. So it, I don't want it to be misled that it's SHAB that's doing this in and of itself. Thank you.
But to your point, Mrs. Agra, we will work to find a way to share information with our families in conjunction with our Mission Forward page as well, where folks might even find a link out to this presentation and so on as we collect that information. But we'll be thinking about how to keep our families up to date.
Well, and having all of this in one place is so important for families, not to have to go to four or five different locations, but this is information I think is so timely, it's so important for people to know, how is the decision gonna be made? Because that's the, probably the most frequent question I get. But the next thing is just how we as a school system, I mean, Robin gave us a great summary of what we're looking at right now, how we have cases in our schools already, et cetera, but how we're letting the public know that data. And I know, I know the answer, but I thought if y'all would just bring everybody that's listening up to date about how we're getting this information out in a timely fashion.
Yes, ma'am. Anytime we have a positive case, our principals are sending out a message to their staff as well as to their community. And so we are trying to be very transparent about every case that we have.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Ms. Concella, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. So as we look to neighboring regional partners, for example, as we look to Chesterfield, Hanover, Richmond, we will have our own, we have our own metrics. And so we're, as to the system that we're using, we're not gonna, if Chesterfield decides to go back, that won't necessarily impact us as to perhaps our PPE supply chain and our staffing and our county numbers. Am I understanding that right?
Yes.
Just so that we are independent of what other regions are doing.
This was a decision made by our health committee as to what metrics we would use and how that decision would be made.
And then secondly, do we anticipate any type of acceleration to the return in-person hybrid learning during the first quarter, or no? The answer is no.
No. We have, we told our families we would be online for the first nine weeks.
Okay.
And like I say, the reason for coming back And like I say, the reason for coming back even in October is, as Robin shared, was to give our families several weeks to be able to be prepared to transition. I don't, you know, I think you need to make sure you're looking at data over time and then making an informed decision so that that, you're not going vacillating back and forth between being virtual, being hybrid, being virtual. We want to make sure that we're making a good decision moving forward for our families.
Okay. And then I'd like to revisit a couple of school topics that we've addressed in prior meetings, but I just need to ask them again to see where we stand. I've communicated and been concerned about our division's ability to communicate with all of our families, especially our EL families. And I know we were looking into different translation software and different apps. So, if you could, someone could give me an update on that?
I can give you a brief one, but I don't know if.
I can chime in with some of that information. If I miss something, please let me know. But you're absolutely right. We, just as we heard the Health Department describing that gap sometimes and making sure we're meeting, we're being culturally responsive and meeting the language barriers as well. We've hosted several family information sessions already. We've had Arabic, Spanish. We continue to work on translating key documents. But school-level communications, in the past, many schools had used Remind, which had some capabilities. We centrally use School Messenger and it asks schools to use that. We understand there are some potential barriers with being able to translate. So, I know our team was looking into some other products that might be used, but in the meantime, working to translate specific messages as needed for the community specifically. And a number of efforts have been launched. There's a great partnership between our Family and Community Engagement, Equity Diversity and Opportunity, and our English Language Specialists. They've hosted some meetings, a series actually, that is ongoing to make sure we're meeting the needs of our families.
Okay. And then another topic I'd like to revisit was the discussion of the secondary schedule. And has the Department of Education waived the seat time? Any requirements associated with seat time? Because it's still a long virtual day for secondary students, even though I realize it's not synchronous at all times.
That's right.
It's very similar to a normal day. And again, these aren't normal times, so.
Absolutely. And certainly, the committee working to put together those schedules, you know, struggled, seeing both sides of that and wanted to provide as much continuity and balance and the required instructional minutes because we have not, those have not been waived at the Virginia Department of Education level, but also recognize that valuable learning can take place even when it's not synchronous. So, working with individual teachers to make sure they understand the best practices of how to manage that. So, while the secondary day is meant to mimic the bell schedule, students would typically follow if they were in person, doesn't mean that they'll be in front of their computers for each and every period or for the duration of the period. But recognizing that this is our first time doing this, we will be looking to hear directly from our students and our teachers at the secondary level once we're a few weeks into this so that we can learn how we might enhance schedules. And if that means shaving some class time off of there, we may do that, or we might find that as individual teachers are working to meet their instructional day, that we're meeting the needs.
Okay. And then the next most frequently asked question I've had is about the use of cameras during virtual learning. And will they be encouraged or required? I just want those listening to hear the answer.
It isn't required that a student engage their camera. We'd like them to if the teacher asks them to. We have asked that students and teachers use generic backgrounds so they're not exposing their home or wherever they're learning from. But certainly understand that it may be that bandwidth might be a challenge at times in homes and activating both the camera and the application in Teams might provide a challenge. They might just want to use the microphone. But teachers will let the students know when they, you know, would like them to be on camera individually to engage in an activity, question and answer. But certainly, it wouldn't be required that a student maintain their camera and on throughout the duration of a course.
And then in combination with the synchronous, on the camera, not on the camera, there is going to be flexibility for attendance? I mean, if there are perhaps technical difficulties or scheduling difficulties that a family may have?
Yes, absolutely. Great question. And we want to assure our families, our students, that, you know, we understand that there's some flexibility with what attendance looks like and in the traditional form that many of us are used to, that's being present in a classroom. And it may be, in many cases, that being present in a virtual session counts as your attendance for the day. But we also recognize that it may be for technical reasons or other reasons presented by a student or their family, that they may not be able to be present synchronously for classroom instruction. So, turning in an assignment, engaging in a discussion with a teacher, this meaningful interaction as worked out between the teacher and the student can count as attendance. It may not be that you're on camera or physically present during that time period. And so, our learning plan, and it's also posted online, talks about what we mean by meaningful interaction and our, our schools will communicate that with our families as well as teachers. I think open communication is going to be key. Students who have difficulties or challenges or families who, you know, require a different scenario should make sure they're letting their teachers know.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Concella. So, again, Dr. Luray, thank you for your presence and participations discussion and we appreciate the hard work that the Virginia Department of Health is doing along with our governor to ensure our safety as a state, as well as, Ms. Gilbert, please go back to your staff and send our thanks to them on behalf of the board and just want them to know that we stand in solidarity with them keeping everybody safe and we appreciate their dedication, their commitment and their sacrifice. And please tell them to stay safe.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Superintendent?
Thank you. And I echo the chairman's thanks to each of you for being present and your involvement in this very important work as we monitor the situation across the region and as it affects our ability as a school division to best serve our students in this scenario. So, we'll look forward to our next presentation. Many thanks. For the next item, I have an update for the board on our progress related to our strategic plan. And while we know we've been in the midst of thinking about new ways of delivering teaching and learning to our students in the midst of the pandemic, I would remind our public and our staff and the board that we do have a strategic plan that was adopted in 2018 that anchors us to our work and sort of serves as those foundational goals that we've committed to and we remain committed to. So, this presentation will allow us to anchor ourselves again around those goals and think about the work that we have to do in accomplishing those between now and 2025. Some of those goals really outline critically important work that we know we must engage in. And so, monitoring those metrics to think about where we are and where we're headed is going to be so important, no matter how we're learning, virtually, in person or any other way, because we know that we want to meet these goals that have been outlined. So, without further ado, I'll turn it over to Dr. Hinton, who will take us through this update.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Cashwell. The Division's strategic plan was first approved in May of 2018. The plan was developed with a wide range of community input from across the county. In fall 2019, we reconvened our Strategic Plan Steering Committee to update the plan to incorporate components from Amy's passport, refine the continuum of efforts across school levels, and identify key performance metrics to monitor our progress. Today, we will provide an update on our progress from the 2019-20 school year. The strategic plan is grounded in the four Henrico County Public Schools' cornerstones of safety and wellness, academic growth, equity and opportunity, and relationships. The eight strategic goals of the plan span across these cornerstones and align with these stated priorities. For the past two years, professional learning for our instructional leaders has focused on priorities outlined in the strategic plan. Specifically, leadership trainings such as restorative practices conducted jointly by our Departments of Professional Learning and Leadership and Equity Diversity and Opportunity have been provided to enhance the skills and strategies of our school leaders needed to foster inclusive, safe, and supportive school cultures through building relationships. Leaders have also focused on building capacity to support our deeper learning model so that students are provided with engaging, learner-centered experiences. Henrico leaders will continue to participate in professional learning opportunities that support engaging learner experiences in both the virtual and face-to-face environments this coming school year. Lastly, leaders are focusing on wellness and self-care of students and staff to ensure we retain our educators and nurture our students. Prioritizing the physical and emotional well-being of students and staff and providing resources that support healthy learning communities continues to be a focus for the 2020-21 school year. Professional learning sessions will be facilitated by the Henrico SEALs team that include proactive strategies to support the social, emotional needs of all members of our learning community. The strategic goals of the plan are monitored through the progress of key performance metrics, which have been identified to be publicly reported at least every odd numbered year. This table shows the alignment of each metric to specific goals. For example, to monitor the division's progress towards the recruitment and retention of teachers, we review teacher and student demographic comparison data, teacher retention data, and survey results annually. Due to the 2019-20 emergency school closure, several metrics are not available from the last school year, including data on school state accreditation and the Henrico survey results. Additionally, we are continuing to develop capacity and processes for tracking our community partnership activities. While individual departments have made efforts to establish community partnerships, a comprehensive database will be organized by the New Workforce and Career Development Specialists in the coming school year. We would like to share the data from the metrics we do have available to us at this Looking at our school attendance metric, this slide shows average daily student attendance for the division and by subgroup. As you can see, all groups have an average daily attendance above 90%. However, on the right, you can see the percentage of students who missed 10% or more days in the school year and are considered chronically absent. Greater disparities are evident across groups in this data, particularly within our Black and Hispanic students, students with disabilities, and economically disadvantaged students. Several implementation drivers that have been underway to support our students and families with regular school attendance include intervention and attendance teams at each school and an increased focus on data processes. These teams are responsible for collecting and monitoring attendance data on a regular basis. Based on their data reviews, school teams plan and implement prevention and intervention strategies to reduce chronic absenteeism. Additionally, data processes have been put into place to provide principals with automatic alerts of students requiring intervention for school attendance. These efforts and others, as outlined in the strategic plan, will continue in the 2020-21 school year. Recruiting and retaining staff that mirror our student population will support our work towards student achievement, culture, and climate, and equity and diversity. Teacher and student demographic data for the 2019-20 school year remain largely consistent with prior year statistics. Efforts continue toward teacher demographics, which are representative of the student population. The Departments of Human Resources and Equity Diversity and Opportunity have worked closely on recruitment and retention practices. A targeted recruitment plan that integrates a division employment needs assessment with additional, intentional allocation of resources, diverse recruitment sources, and partnerships with engaged stakeholders has been developed. As we work to specifically retain staff of color, the Equity and Diversity Advisor Committee has also formulated a plan to assess concerns for staff of color through a survey and focus groups this coming school year. With the goal of recruiting, retaining, and rewarding educators, we clearly recognize the importance of retaining our teachers to support our mission. The teacher retention rate for school year 1920 was 91%, a 2% increase from the previous year. Various factors contribute to teacher retention to include salary and benefits, work conditions, leadership, professional development, and opportunities for collaboration and shared decision-making. Undoubtedly, the current pandemic may also have been a factor for some with regards to the decision to remain in the division's employ. In 2019-20, significant efforts were directed to the development of a career ladder program. With the development of the career ladder, Henrico was poised to lead the region in providing innovative opportunities for employees to increase compensation and career advancement through professional learning. Budgetary impacts due to COVID-19 have, however, paused the career ladder implementation efforts, which we aim to resume when possible. Equitable and secure physical learning environments are achieved through adherence to safety procedures and protocols while maintaining a welcoming environment. The Office of Safety and Security annually reviews all safety procedures to ensure they reflect state guidelines and national best practices. Henrico exceeds state requirements with our comprehensive safety audit process, which helps to identify safety components where schools may need additional support. This year, all 15 schools audited exceeded divisional expectations. This is the second year in a row during the comprehensive safety audit process that all audited schools received this rating. When the Division's strategic plan was released in October of 2019, we shared that the Division leadership team would be identifying additional performance metrics with a lens toward equity and applying an equity index formula to those metrics. The equity index, based on Estelle Ben-Simon's Academic Equity Scorecard Framework, is used to identify groups that are under or overrepresented in a specific outcome. The index is calculated by taking the percentage of students achieving the outcome and dividing it by the percentage of students in a specific subgroup achieving that same outcome. Scores less than one indicate underrepresentation of the group, whereas an index score higher than one shows overrepresentation of the group. Five equity indices have been identified aligned to four goals outlined in our plan. Through monitoring these indices, we have additional metrics to assure our students are being provided with equitable learning opportunities and are proportionately represented in our outcomes when preparing students to be life-ready. These outcomes were identified through their research-based correlations with academic and social outcomes, as well as community connections and relationships. Research has shown that suspensions and expulsions are related to lower academic outcomes, alienation from school, crime, and substance abuse. When schools put strategies into place, such as implementation of restorative practices to reduce these incidents, increases are seen in student test scores, attendance rates, and student perceptions of school climate. From prior presentations made to the board, it is evident that there is disproportionality in out-of-school suspensions among various student groups. The equity index comparison from the last two years for out-of-school suspensions shows an overrepresentation of Black students, students with disabilities, and economically disadvantaged students. In response to this data, we have established division and school-level teams to utilize the Virginia-tiered Systems of Support Framework to analyze data and problem-solve solutions. This framework, which is rooted in research and evidence-based practices, aids student support personnel in implementing proactive, inclusive, and innovative practices that include leveled systems of intervention and disciplinary responses, establishing behavioral expectations and supporting our students to meet them, establishing procedures to manage classrooms, restorative practices, and behavior support plans. Our mission is to inspire and empower students to become contributing citizens by ensuring students have the knowledge, skills, and attributes needed to be life-ready. When applying the equity index to graduation rate, most groups are represented equitably within the indicator. Additional support, however, is needed specifically for our Hispanic and English learner students as they strive to meet our graduation requirements. To improve the on-time graduation rate for our Hispanic and English learner students, we focused on meaningful engagement and intentional strategies. For example, information has been sent home in family-native languages. We administered a survey to our English learners that were repeating the ninth grade to better understand barriers to achievement and applied those ideas to school-wide programs. Small group counseling was made available for struggling English learner and Hispanic students that included both a counselor and an interpreter. We provided English learner-directed study with our instructional assistant to provide daily targeted assistance to students throughout the year. We also provided English learner mentoring with more specific and direct support provided for our seniors. We believe through purposeful engagement. We believe through purposeful engagement and intentional strategies, we will create a culture of success for our English learner students and Hispanic students that are representative of our majority population. Providing opportunities for students to have engaging, learner-centered experiences to empower them to become contributing citizens is a goal of our strategic plan. Towards this goal, by the time students graduate, we want all graduates to have had access to and enrolled in advanced high school coursework, including honors, advanced placement, IB, or dual enrollment courses. The Equity Index shows disparities among student groups for this metric, such that Black students, students with disabilities, English learners, and economically disadvantaged students are underrepresented to varying degrees. Beginning with the 2019-20 school year, each high school placed an emphasis on providing more access to advanced coursework for all students, particularly in our underrepresented populations. An administrator from each of our high schools works directly with our Director of High School Education on removing barriers and educating students, staff, families, and communities on the benefits of taking advanced courses. Some of the work that has been done over the course of this past year includes hosting information sessions for families and students, looking at different and creative ways to identify students for advanced courses, going beyond grades and test scores, and looking at passion and interest. High schools are also working with feeder schools to begin the process of identifying students in our underrepresented populations for advanced courses as they transition to high school. Additionally, we'd like to thank the board for expanding our PSAT testing to provide that opportunity for all of our ninth and 10th graders this past year. This data assists schools in identifying students with AP potential. The overall goal is to be intentional about recruiting and providing access to advanced coursework for all students. Towards our goal of fostering an inclusive, safe, and supportive climate, we are continuing to review our process for gifted identification to ensure students from all cultural and socioeconomic backgrounds are appropriately identified for these services. Additionally, students identified for gifted services are likely to enroll in advanced courses, feeding into our previously discussed data point. Data indicate underrepresentation of Black and Hispanic students, students with disabilities, English learners, and economically disadvantaged students among those identified as gifted. Our gifted specialist is working closely with the Department of Equity, Diversity, and Opportunity to complete an equity audit of this area. Additionally, they are working with schools to identify a talent pool in each school to expand the diversity of our gifted population, and will be providing staff training on identifying gifted characteristics in underrepresented students. As was shown earlier, we have disparities across certain groups in regards to chronic absenteeism, such that certain student groups are overrepresented in this metric, including Black students, Hispanic students, students with disabilities, and economically disadvantaged students. Many effective strategies to improve attendance are predicated on developing meaningful connections among schools, parents, and community resources, such as communicating the importance of daily attendance with parents, ensuring parents have access to the community partners that can help address the root cause of poor attendance, and developing school support teams that can track and intervene earlier with students, as we spoke about earlier. Considering this data, we have several next steps planned. This fall, we will establish internal work groups led by our division leadership team to plan for and monitor the strategic plan implementation drivers. These groups will develop roadmaps for how and when drivers will be prioritized over the remaining five years of our plan, and will periodically meet to review their progress. In October, we will reconvene our strategic plan steering committee, which includes students, staff, community members, and two of our school board members, Ms. Consella and Ms. Shea, to share work group updates and review any suggested plan revisions. For example, planned modifications may be needed in light of budgetary needs or other priorities that arise for the school division. We also plan to create a mechanism for community stakeholders to understand our work toward meeting our goals. This mechanism will be incorporated into our website and may be similar to the updates provided from Amy's Passport. Lastly, to keep the community informed of our progress updates, we will provide more frequent updates throughout the year. The next update will occur in December after work groups and the steering committee have had an opportunity to meet and provide feedback. Additionally, moving forward, staff will be aligning school board meeting agenda items to specific strategic goals as another way of showing alignment of our work. At this time, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Dr. Hinton. Before we ask you some questions, our superintendent would like to take a point of preference.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. And before we open it up to questions, I just want to add a few remarks to summarize Dr. Hinton's presentation related to the strategic plan. And you know, those of you who tuned into the December presentation of our strategic plan saw the Equity Index used for the first time, and just want to emphasize while, you know, that's one more data point, we are really anchoring ourselves around that equity data. So we recognize these shared outcomes that we all want to achieve, but in order for us to do that work and to get there, we need to know where we are today. And so keeping an eye on that data and being able to set benchmarks for ourselves and monitor our progress is critically important. And I also want to acknowledge that that data is not a reflection of where we want to be. It's hard to look at those slides and see where you have underrepresentation of so many of our student groups, and that is not what we aim for in Henrico. And so when we talk about equity work, I want folks to know that it's not just about setting goals, it's about being real about where we are today, knowing our data, monitoring that, and tracking our progress forward. And so the leadership team, and I felt it was important that we add that set of equity indices to the measures that were already in place. And so certainly, the measures that are there and that were put in place along with the strategic plan are good in measuring our progress, looking at our school accreditation rates, and all of those are important measures. But I think we all know that they matter not if we're not meeting those equity measures and equity goals that we've set for ourselves and that we've anchored ourselves in one of our cornerstone. So you know, we heard a little from Dr. Hinton about some of the work we've begun in each of those areas, but we recognize we have miles to go, and there is some urgency around that work when we see that data in front of us. And so I just wanted to, again, explain why the Equity Index was added and why I think it's critically important, and underscore the urgency around that work that I feel as your superintendent and that our leadership team feels as we engage in work and moving the strategic plan forward, and we'll look forward to continuing to update you on our progress. And I would turn it over for any questions.
Well, real quick, I mean, I'm glad that you said that because for me, Ms. Ogburn, I tell you, oftentimes, as when I was the only African-American and male, we get this data and persons who look like me, gender and color, you know, the statement is we're overrepresented in the wrong areas and we're underrepresented in the areas that would make us life-ready. If you look at the data, economically disadvantaged students with disabilities and Black students, and I applaud you for that statement and the team because, you know, in order to address anything, we must first accept the reality, but we also must acknowledge the reality. And so if we act as though these disparities don't exist, then we can't truly be honest in dealing with them, as well with the, from a First Lady's review of our special education program. So it's important, and so I thank you for that because out-of-school suspension data, in-school suspension data, you know, we definitely have to be very arduous in our desire to make sure we get the data trending in a different direction. And before I get to Ms. Consella, let me just ask you one question, Dr. Hinton. So with the strategic plan, we have the baseline numbers, and we have the comparative analysis from that baseline last year and the current data. What are you using as your driver to determine, you know, the threshold of where we want to be, how long it might take us to get there, and being able to definitively, you know, say, you know, this is working as far as empirical data?
Well, for the Equity Index, the closer to one you are, that's really our goal, is to get, let me get back. To get closer to one is really where we want to be so that all groups are equally or equitably represented according to their demographics and our population. For the other metrics, that's something that our division leadership team, as they establish those work groups, are going to grapple with in terms of where do we want to be at the end of the next five years.
Thank you so much, Ms. Consella.
Yes, thank you. I agree with you, Reverend Cooper, and thank you for that statement, Dr. Cashwell, letting us know that we still have a lot of work to do. I am as troubled about our marginalized communities and the data that this reflects. However, I'm going to say something positive because prior to Dr. Cashwell's arrival, I mean, I know I sat on the strategic plan committee. I don't think we had the metrics like this prior, correct? So we've come a long way. Granted, we have a long way to go, but I just wanted to bring that forward, that that was part of what you saw when you arrived, that we did not have metrics to measure our strategic plan, which makes no sense that we did not have that. But thank you for putting that in motion, and Dr. Hinton, for, you know, your work on this. I really don't have any specific questions. I just know we have work to do.
Thank you for your work as well on that, Ms. Consella and Ms. Ogburn.
Just, you know, oftentimes, the strategic plan just sort of is there. It's something we do, but it's not really used as the roadmap that it's intended to be. And so I think that that is a great change to see, that we are using it that way. So I appreciate the deep dive, I appreciate the metrics and the results of, truly, it shows the results of our staff's hard work, and we can measure, you know, where we are, but also, and see what works well, but see what we have work to do and identify and focus the work, which is, I think, a very valuable thing to do. The teacher retention piece, I'm so glad to see that number up. I would hazard a guess that, you know, our teachers feel like they're being heard more than ever. Great strides have been made in that over the years, and I think we are listening to our teachers more than ever, and they feel it's a more inclusive environment than ever. It's work that I know that has been ongoing ever since I've been on the board. But we, I think our teachers feel part of that family to be heard more than ever. I really appreciate the equity audit as well, and our efforts to be sure that advanced classes are available to everyone. I mean, this is an ongoing work in making sure that opportunities are there. And to me, that is, that is the work we have to do, that opportunity is available to every student to take advantage of what's out there for them to do, and it's not determined by their zip code, it is not determined by which school they're in. It's available to everyone. And I mean, as we look at specialty center applications, and we look at, I know on the Maggie Walker Board, we are looking at our admissions policies, et cetera, you know, just making sure that our students know in fourth and fifth grade what they need to do in middle school to make sure that those opportunities to advance to specialty centers and Maggie Walker or whatever are there for everyone. So I appreciate that equity audit, I appreciate that our advanced courses are being made available to everyone. So to me, I really, I mean, seriously, we have, I think you're right, Ms. Consella, we have work to do, but I think we also, there's great work going on. So I appreciate the deep dive. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Ogburn, Mrs. Shea.
Thank you. I agree with my, everything my colleagues and the superintendent have said, and I really look forward to better using this as a roadmap and looking at how it aligns to our work going forth. I think it's really important when we're looking at some of these output metrics and we look at the work that needs to be done, that we ensure that we are not just fixing the outcome, but truly fixing the incomes that produce that outcome so that we organically are getting the outcome that we are looking for. I think that's how we create systemic change, not by just making the output metrics fit what we want to see. And so just a piece on that, Dr. Hinton, would you mind going back to the course or the slide on advanced course enrollment? Okay, so we see that graph there, and then the next slide is the gifted enrollment. And so if we kind of pan back and forth between those two, you see, they have a very, very, very similar shape, except the gifted is just almost multiplied by some sort of coefficient to extrapolate it out. And so, you know, it's things like this, looking at this to say, to figure out if that's a correlation or causation, right? And so going forth, you know, and how do we, how does that play in? And so I won't put you on the spot now unless you really want to be, if that's a correlation or causation, but it's things like that in really looking at what feeds into these outcomes that I think we need to continue to dig into. Some, just kind of more general questions, when we look at the key performance metrics, which were at the top of the presentation, a lot of these aren't going to be applicable this year. So the state has waived accreditation, which we see as a metric for a lot of our items. Attendance is going to look different this year, which is a metric for our items. Teacher retention is frankly going to look very different this year. There may not be a survey. So as you see, a lot of these metrics aren't going to apply this year. So how are we going to evaluate our strategic plan in these unusual circumstances?
I think Dr. Hinton spoke to that, if I may chime in. When she talked about this steering committee work and prioritizing each goal, I think you're absolutely right. We recognize that while some of these metric measurements may not be possible or in place given the circumstance, the work still has to go on, and it should go on, and we want to make sure that we're still striving towards the outcomes desired in the goals that we've set for the strategic plan. So looking at the implementation drivers, each of the goals has a list of drivers, and so figuring out how to prioritize those drivers, which of those drivers make the most sense now, and then what measures specifically might go with each of those that we can leverage? Are there alternative measures that we may want to introduce in the interim, given the circumstances? So absolutely, I think that's some of the work that those groups will be doing as they're assigned to each specific goal and the drivers within.
Thank you. I think it's important we just don't have a big gap, right, for, and then I'll just end with, yesterday I got to participate in an NSBA training workshop about agency and ownership and how that plays in with equity. And, you know, they talked about how that fed into the strategic plan and really looking at, not just looking at state accreditation and our, you know, traditional achievement numbers, but how do we grow agency among our students so that they have ownership of our learning because that, you know, and that ties into the transform the curriculum piece, but we know when students are more engaged, when it's a student-centric learning environment instead of a sage-on-a-stage learning environment, when the students are doing the work, their brain is the one that's learning. And I think that's just going to be so imperative this year in virtual learning so that our achievement gaps don't continue to grow between some of our groups. I think looking at how can we transform our curriculum in the way we deliver things so it's not just students sitting and trying to absorb, but continue that work that our teaching and innovation team have already been doing on how is it student-centered and student-driven? And so I, you know, I'm really hoping that with all the great training they've been doing this summer and learning how to do virtual teaching and best practices, that will really be a catalyst for these innovative instruction methods because I think that's how we fill a lot of our equity gaps, is with, you know, true agency and ownership for our students and cultivating that in our school cultures.
So it's very interesting. I think in our last school board meeting, we looked at numbers, we looked at dollars that correlated to each district, and we learned, and I'm talking to those that are watching right now, and we learned that when it comes to dollars, that more dollars is spent in the East End than in other districts. So in that, in that moment, I believe in our last school board meeting, I mentioned, I'm glad that we had those dollars, and it'll make more sense as to why when we talk about the underlying reasons why. So So when you watch this presentation and you saw chronic absenteeism by Black students at 14%, and we're targeted and wanting to be 10% or less, that gives you a little bit more understanding of why some areas are receiving more dollars than others. I also say, you know, to you that we know that putting a whole bunch of money in one area does not solve the problem when you have these kind of numbers. So you can toss as much money as you like, but until we get to a place where we can have that conversation about underlying reasons is the moment we begin to reduce achievement gaps between students with disabilities, Black, et cetera. And so I'm really pleased, Dr. Cashwell, that we are here about to have that conversation. And I'm so locked and loaded to have it. I think that when we're at a place where we can truly talk about some of these underlying reasons as to why. Hey, my mic went off. I don't know if that was a sign or not. But I do think that, you know, now that we're at this place where we have some data that we can speak to factually, we can also speak to our cultures individually and what we're experiencing, I think we're at a place where we are definitely going to see change, because we're going to have conversations around the real underlying reasons as to why more money is put in one place and other, and we're going to talk about how come there's more money put in one place, but we don't see advancement? There's a reason for that. And I'm glad that we're going to get to that place of having that conversation. I do have a couple of questions regarding absenteeism. Do we have an assigned attendance officer at each school?
There's a team of attendance officers and folks who focus on truancy. Now, there are points of contact in each building, and so our school social workers, it's administration, it's a partnership of that team. Does that answer your question?
It does, and that speaks to resources. I think that as you are looking and you get into the different groups that will be assessing the necessary changes that are needed due to the impacts of COVID, I'd like for you guys to also explore resources. Take a look at the resources that actually surround each school, because your school quality sometimes is as good as the resources that surround it, and not financial resources specifically. So I think it's important, as you have those conversations, take a look at that, because the resources that surround it also may tell a story around culture. The other piece I'd like to share is around the work of Dr. Manns. I want to remind folks that we didn't have an equity officer a few years ago. And so I think that when we recognize as a system, because that's what we are in partnership, that, you know, having an equity position of one person is a step in the right direction. But I also think it deserves a team. And so I think that as we move forward and we're looking at the work that's going to be done here in the discussions, I think we also need to talk about how we look at equity, not just as a position, but how do we actually infuse it into all of our decision-making as a public school system? So just some considerations to think about. I also had a couple of questions around the data pieces here. Mrs. Shea did a great job of pointing out how are we actually going to look at these data points under the COVID. I'll share, I like that we are starting on a solid foundation. You know, you don't build a house on sand. You have to build it with a firm foundation. It may take a long time for that house to be built because of the environmental things that happen around it, but I am pleased that we're going to start with a foundation. And as the environment around it changes, we have a team in place between the leadership team and this focus group, if you will, that will be assessing it, will be able to make changes as needed. So I am really pleased that that's the approach here. And I think I'm a strong advocate for building out any type of assessment with strong foundation, and do not let the environment change that foundation, just like you wouldn't build a house on sand, because it moves. The last piece I want to talk about is around communication. I think you shared it already, but perhaps I may have missed it. Can you share with me again how this information is going to be shared, not just with the school board, but with the community?
Sure. So one of our next steps is that we're going to work on a mechanism for how to publicly share this information. We do have it available on our website, but we want to make it more dynamic. We really want to tell the story of the work that we're doing in the school division. So we're going to be working with our Department of Communications office to make something similar to the progress updates that we had for Amy's passport.
Fantastic. And then the monitoring of the implementation drivers, how is that going to work?
So that'll be something that those work groups are going to be working on. As Dr. Cashwell mentioned, they're going to be working on any additional metrics that we need to add to that plan, and those division leadership team members who are going to organize those work groups are going to have progress updates provided more often.
Fantastic. One thing I'd like to add is, you know, I'm pretty sure that you and your team will provide guidance, but I think it's important to make sure that the team or the focus group also has the freedom to really feel safe in sharing, you know, what they want to do around moving forward with the metrics and everything else they'll come up with. And so I say that because I think that trusting relationships are important in this work. And so the individuals that are a part of this group, I am hopeful that some sort of screening or some sort of process took place so that we can make sure that the individuals on this team truly represent and understand sort of a little bit of that struggle as well as the privilege. I want to make sure that this group truly understands how we can move forward. So those are a few considerations for you. You are the expert, but I wanted to make sure that I share that with you so that as you're moving forward, there's all these different pieces in order to put this puzzle together. So thank you so much, and thank you, Dr. Cashwell, as well.
Reverend Cooper, may I? Having sat on the committee, Steering Committee, since 2018 for strategic plan, I would like for Dr. Hinton to explain how members were chosen. I think that's important during this discussion, if you don't mind, Dr. Hinton.
Sure. We had an open process, an open application process back when the Steering Committee was established. And through that process, they submitted an application. The application was blind scored by two staff members, and then those scores were combined, and we looked at kind of the distribution of the highest scores. Really, we were looking for community and staff and students who were objective and could really see the big picture of the county as a whole. So those steering committees were selected through that application process. And then aside from that Steering Committee, we also had work groups that helped create the plan originally. We had over 300 community members who applied to be on those work groups, and we actually put every person who wanted to be involved on a work group to help develop the original plan process. So it was a very comprehensive process.
And I'll share with you that I was actually on the Transformation for High School Committee as well. And so I can share and say this because of my own experience, that it's still critically important to make sure that we screen for individuals, particularly for this, that they are there to really move forward and move the needle forward. When I participated in Transformation for High School Curriculum in understanding how do we give our students real-life experiences? And so it was a wonderful experience, but I can share with you that there were individuals that were there that said, I'm not quite sure. I applied, and I'm here, but it's not a good fit. And so I say that to you again, because, one, being on the committee and seeing some of the things coming to fruition that myself and others put together, and the stuff that is coming to fruition in our high school that exists right now is doing fantastic. But I have my own experience, and I can sit here and tell you that there were members that felt like their understanding of their role is different from what it was, the work that they had to do. So it is, I think, a little bit of a concern, because we are in a different place and time. And so if you're going to use the same individuals that you used in the past for this committee, I'm just asking for you to consider, maybe take a moment to make sure that those individuals truly understand the work that's ahead of them, because it's truly important work.
Thank you.
Thank you, and we certainly take note of those suggestions, I know Dr. Hinton and I have. And I would also just echo your acknowledgement of Dr. Manns, our Equity, Diversity, and Opportunity Officer, who is, in the scheme of things, fairly new at this work. I mean, two years and some change into the position and leveraging our Equity and Diversity Advisory Committee, and certainly see how that lens has allowed some momentum all across the strategic plan in all areas. And so that's work we're all committed to, and just want to acknowledge, you know, your comment, that this is work we all need to do, and relying on one person or a team of five or a team of 10 to say, these are our folks who do equity work, will just never move the needle in this strategic plan. Every department head, every person, every leader in our school buildings, classroom teachers, need to be approaching their work with an equity lens, and that's how we will accomplish our work together. And so everything we can do to continue to build that capacity and expertise across the school division will be tremendous, and certainly that's work that Dr. Manns is helping shape. So we're so appreciative. Thank you.
Ma'am, to the top.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Hinton. Those are all the questions related to the strategic plan. Next, we have a number of policies that are coming forward for your review, and then subsequently I'll be asking for your approval on policies that were reviewed the last time around. And Mrs. Gumpel is actually joining us electronically, so for any purposes of getting the technology ready, I'll turn to the clerks to let us know when she's able to join us virtually and how that, when we're ready to proceed with that. But can introduce that the first policy we'd be looking at is a revision to proposed policy P-2-03-001, which is Board as a Body. And it looks like we may just need to pause for a moment for technical challenges. I won't say technical difficulties. All right. It looks like Mrs. Gumpel has joined us electronically. We appreciate her being with us.
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Dr. Cash.
All right. Thank you for being here. I have introduced already for the board and the public that you are providing a review of a number of policies, and then subsequently I'll be seeking approval, and that we're slated to start with a brief review of policy P-2-03-001, Board as a Body. Are you able to provide that review?
The recommended change is due to a legislative change adding, I think there's a bit of a lag.
Yeah, it's a legislative change, so.
So I'm just going to continue on adding bus drivers to the annual DOE Critical Shortages Report. This policy has been posted on the Division website for public comment and will be presented to you for consideration for approval on September 24th.
Are there any questions about that particular item? All right, the next one would be a review of proposed revisions to policy P-6.
Are there any questions?
No questions. No questions. And Mrs. Gumpel, since there is a delay, I'll go ahead and introduce each of the policies and provide a brief synopsis, and then if there are questions, we'll turn it over to you. Perhaps that'll work better. All right then. So proposed, again, revision to P-2-04-006, electronic participation in meetings from remote locations. And the background of this is certainly due to the unprecedented circumstances experienced as COVID-19. V S B A has recommended adding the phrase "or," as otherwise permitted by law, to this policy. That limits the practice of electronic participation in meetings from remote locations. Are there any questions about this proposed revision? All right. Seeing no questions, the other policy we're bringing forward for your review is policy P-6-04-005, demonstrations and strikes. And as part of an ongoing review of policy, the changes to this policy have been recommended by the Policy Committee, and an analysis of this policy through an equity lens has prompted the proposed change. Are there any questions related to? It looks like Mrs. Shea has a question, and Mrs. Gumpel will turn it over to you to respond.
So I want to, first of all, thank my colleagues, Ms. Consella and Ms. Ogbonn, who serve on the Policy Committee. And so often when I have questions, I'll vet with them kind of what the discussion in the committee was. So thank you for your work and reporting out. For this policy and talking with Ms. Consella and Ms. Ogbonn, I learned that it is directed for students. It is a student-centric policy, but personally, I missed that, since we didn't have the neighboring policies, and this one didn't explicitly say students, other than the student code of conduct. So I have a little bit of, I don't know if we need to add some specific language around students into this, but the other thing is, knowing this provides, pertains to students, I don't think we can limit this 24/7 without, you know, some sort of First Amendment infraction. So when does this policy pertain? Does it pertain during school hours, on school property, during an official club event? You know, what are the, what's the scope of this policy for our students?
So much like the student code of conduct expectations, it would apply to school grounds, school-sponsored activities, which would include field trips, games, performances, et cetera. The policy applies to any student or student group that would violate the policy.
Thank you.
Ms. Shea, I'm going to just ask real quick, would it make you feel more comfortable if we defined when this policy is in place? Because we can always take it back to the Policy Committee for refinement if we feel like it needs that, you know, that addition.
I don't think clarification would be a bad thing here.
Okay.
You know, just making sure it's clear from the beginning that it pertains to students and that it's during those times that Ms. Gumpel specified.
Okay. Are there any other questions related to that particular policy? All right, next, we're providing, next, we're providing a review of proposed revisions to policy P-6-05, which is conduct. And are there any questions? This is minor wording that's been changed, just as part of ongoing review of policy. Are there any questions about these minor word changes? No? Okay. The next one is a review of revisions to policy P-6-06-003, suspension or expulsion. And this, again, was some minor wording change to ensure clarity as part of that ongoing policy review process. Are there any questions? Seeing no questions, the next one is a review of policy P-6, changes to policy P-6-06-004, suspension of bus writing privileges. The word pupils has been changed to students for better clarity here. Any questions? All right. The next one is a review of proposed revisions to policy P-6-06-008, reassignment of students to alternative education programs following a criminal charge or conviction. As part of the ongoing review of policy, wording has been modified to assure alignment with the Code of Virginia here. Are there any questions? Seeing no questions, the next revision being proposed is to policy P-6-12-010, guest speakers during school hours. This policy was reviewed again as part of that ongoing policy review and has been amended to address virtual as well as in-person guest speakers, and the policy has also been updated to reflect current practice. Are there any questions?
I did have a question.
And Mrs. Atkins has a question, so I'll defer to Mrs. Gumpel.
So I agree with Mrs. Shea. I want to thank.
I want to thank Ms. Consella and Mrs. Ogborne for their work in all these policies, and you as well, Mrs. Gumpel. My question was the first sentence on here, "School Personnel and Officially Recognized Student and/or Parent Organizations May Invite Outside Guest Speaker." What does it mean by officially recognized? Is it just an official student that's enrolled in our school or someone that's just recognized? I was just a little unclear as to what officially recognized means. Is that an interpretation of someone saying, you know, recognizing the student? What does that mean?
That would apply to a student that is being recognized as a guest speaker in this capacity.
Yes, and Dr. Tigan's going to come forward and provide some clarity on that one.
Okay. The actual language, I believe, is it's talking about officially recognized student or parent organizations. So, you know, it would...it's not individual students. It's organizations. So, it could be the SCA, it could be NHS, it, you know, it's someone who's representing an official organization within our school.
Because it...and if you don't mind, Dr. Tigan, I'm going to tag in. But if you read the whole phrase, it's officially recognized student and/or parent organizations may invite. And so, for example, the student government, or a key club, or the chorus, something like that, any kind of official club or organization within a school may invite outside guest speakers. Does that make sense?
Right.
And I think the bolding there is really...it throws you off a little bit.
Right.
But for example, when we did this, we wanted to be sure to cover the PTA. Because before, it said student. I mean, PTAs, for example, weren't covered, booster groups, any kind of group like that that was inviting a guest speaker, and this didn't apply. You know, we hadn't had that coverage.
No, that makes sense to me. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Tigan, and thanks for the question. All right, next, we are looking...I'm looking to seek your approval for proposed revisions that have previously been presented for your consideration. The first one I'm seeking your approval for are revisions to policy P1-03, Nondiscrimination.
Is there a motion to waive the 30-day review period and approve proposed legislative-driven revisions to policy P1-03, Nondiscrimination?
So moved. Second?
It's been moved by Mrs. Atkins and seconded by Mrs. Ogborne. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it, the policy has been approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Next, I'm seeking your approval of proposed revisions to policy P4-01-001, Equal Employment, Opportunity, and Harassment.
Is there a motion to waive the 30-day review period and approve proposed legislative-driven revisions to policy P4-01-001, Equal Employment, Opportunity, and Harassment?
So moved.
Been moved by Mrs. Shea. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Consella. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it, the policy has been approved.
Thank you. Next, I'm seeking your approval of the proposed new policy, P4-01-010, Grievance Process for Sexual Discrimination or Harassment Prohibited by Title IX.
Is there a motion to waive the 30-day review period and approve proposed new policy, P4-01-010, Grievance Process for Sexual Discrimination or Harassment Prohibited by Title IX?
So moved.
Been moved by Ms. Consella. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Atkins. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it, the policy is approved.
Thank you. Next, seeking your approval of proposed revisions to policy P6-04-004, Complaints and Grievances.
Is there a motion to waive the 30-day review period and approve proposed revisions to policy P6-04-004, Complaints and Grievances?
So moved.
Been moved by Mrs. Ogborne. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Atkins. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it, and the policy has been approved.
Thank you. Next, seeking your approval of proposed revisions to policy P6-04-007, Nondiscrimination.
Is there a motion to waive the 30-day review period and approve proposed revisions to policy P6-04-007, Nondiscrimination?
So moved.
Been moved by Ms. Consella. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Shea. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it, the policy has been approved.
Next, seeking your approval of proposed revisions to policy P6-05-012, Sexual Harassment and Appropriate Sexual Behavior.
Is there a motion to waive the 30-day review period and approve proposed revisions to policy P6-05-012, Sexual Harassment and Appropriate Sexual Behavior?
So moved.
Been moved by Mrs. Ogborne. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Atkins. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it, the policy has been approved.
Thank you. Next, seeking your approval of proposed revisions to policy P6-18-006, Disclosure of Record Data.
Is there a motion to waive the 30-day review period and approve proposed legislative-driven revisions to policy P6-18-006, Disclosure of Record Data?
So moved.
Been moved by Mrs. Shea. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Ogborne. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it, the policy has been approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. That concludes policies I'm bringing forward. For the next item, I'm recommending that the school board accept the Middle School Teacher Core Grant Award of $20,000 from the Virginia Department of Education.
Is there a motion to accept the Middle School Teacher Core Grant Award for $20,000 from the Virginia Department of Education?
So moved.
It's been moved by Mrs. Ogborne. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Consella. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it, the grant has been accepted.
Thank you. Next, the superintendent is recommending that the school board accept the Individual Student Alternative Education Plan, or ISAP, grant award funding of $50,318.97 from the Virginia Department of Education.
Is there a motion to accept the Individual Student Alternative Education Plan Grant Award Funding of $50,318.97 from the Virginia Department of Education?
So moved.
Been moved by Mrs. Shea. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Atkins. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it, the grant has been accepted.
Thank you so much. And for the next item, I'm pleased to bring to you an update on the collaboration and training of school resource officers as we planned for the 2020-2021 school year and as requested by members of this board. As a result of the Joint Board of Supervisors School Board Meeting, you asked that we bring forward an update as we were planning to prepare for the new school year related to training that would be taking place and any programmatic update. So, I'm going to turn it over to Courtney Berry, who will kick us off and introduce our guests we're pleased to have with us from the Henrico Police Department. Welcome.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Dr. Cashwell. Let me welcome Lieutenant Colonel Linda Tony. She's here as a guest to help answer so many questions you guys might have at the end of the presentation. So, I'm always pleased and proud to talk about the relationships we have with school resource officers, because in Henrico County, it is a solid, healthy, and valued relationship. I realize that is not true everywhere when I meet with my colleagues across the state and across the country, but I can assure you that is true here in Henrico. Today, I will be focusing on the collaboration between schools and police, the school resource officer training, new collaborations and training opportunities, and what the school resource officer role will look like during our online for the first nine. But before I do that, I ask you pay close attention to the common thread that is woven throughout this presentation, which directly links to our relationships and safety and wellness cornerstones. I hope that when this presentation is complete, it is evident that the collaboration between schools and police is not just purposeful, but also impactful. Here is a look at our agenda. First, I will do a recap of the information provided by Lieutenant Colonel Linda Tony during the joint board meeting back in June. I will take you through a day in the life of the police and schools' relationships, working our way from the school level all the way up to the central office level, and highlight some of the things police have done above and beyond during COVID-19 to support our schools. I will also discuss the training the school resource officers go through to include state certifications, new trainings, upcoming collaboration opportunities between schools and police, and lastly, review what the school resource officer's role will look like during the virtual start to the school year and throughout the remaining of the 2020-2021 school year.
And we'll pause for just a moment until we're able to resume projecting the presentation.
There you go. Okay. Thank you. So, back in June, during the joint board meeting...
Might we pause for just a moment and make sure that our...is it a technical difficulty with what's being projected to the public, or is it simply internal to our screens? We're not sure.
I'm not...I haven't touched anything. Yep. Oh, there...I just moved the mouse and it brought it back up.
It's not in presentation mode, based on what I can see, and that may be part of the issue.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that now we'll resume. So, we've heard the agenda.
So, that was the...yeah, so I will move to Slide 3, which is discussing of the recap. So, back in June, during the joint board meeting, Lieutenant Colonel Linda Tony provided a copy of the timeline of the school resource officer program and highlighted key components to include the discussion of the juvenile services officer programs, which was created by Henrico Police and established in 2015 to certify school resource officers as juvenile services officers. She also discussed the changes to incident crime reports, which were done in 2015 to help better capture data associated with offenses on school property. And another key area she focused on were opportunities for school and community engagement with school resource officers, which were on...on the next slide, you will see a list of those opportunities. So, here are some of the opportunities that are provided by the police that support school community engagement, and those are the Police Athletically, which is better known as PAL, Achievable Dream Academy at Highland Springs Elementary School, Big Feet, Little Feet Meet, and Meet in the Middle, which is for our Special Olympics, the Chief Student Advisory Board, Crime Stoppers Poster Contest, the Explorer Program, the JROTC Leadership Camp. And then we also have SROs who are engaged in sponsoring clubs and sports at their school, and that includes the Law Enforcement Club at Brooklyn Middle School, the SHE Is Leadership and Mentoring Program at Glen Allen High School, the Lacrosse Team at Highland Springs High School, and the Step Dance Team at Glen Allen High School. They also support with Student Government Day, Threat Assessments, the Too Smart to Start Coalition, VCU Day of Play, Youth Academy, and the Youth Services to Aid Recovery, which is better known as STAR, which is a part of their Crisis Intervention Team. And then here are some pictures of our school resource officers engaging with students and showing support with HCPS. And this is from this past school year. And then I wanted to take you through this day in the life of relationship between schools and police. But first, I think it's important to note that in some school districts, the police chief assigns the SROs to a school, and therein is no room for discussion of expectations, no opportunities to plan, and no recourse for complaints. That is not the case here in Henrico County. While the SROs are assigned by the school...to schools by the chief of police, and their actions are directed by the chief, we enjoy full collaboration before, during, and after assignments are made. So, let's start at the school level with the school resource officer and school administration, where they conduct a review of expectations. The school resource officer works to ensure the safety in all...the safety of all in the building and on campus by patrolling the campus and being highly visible to students, staff, and visitors, conducting investigations when complaints are made, following up on missing person reports involving students at any school they are assigned, helping address traffic issues on school grounds, providing law-related guidance to students and administrators as needed, and working with the school security officer in partnership to make a cooperative and unified contribution to the culture of safety and security on campus. Next, the school resource officer meets with new and existing faculty and provides training in crisis management and school safety. They begin preparing the faculty to respond to school emergencies so they can provide the highest level of protection for our students in the event of a crisis. They then meet with students and begin developing a rapport. They work to know the name of all students and staff and communicate with them to encourage positive behavior and interactions between police, students, parents, and faculty. Excuse me. They focus on fostering relationships with students who have emotional challenges so that when the student is in crisis, they already have a positive relationship with the officer. They have an open door policy and are available and approachable. They even provide instruction to students by co-teaching with subjects such as driver's education and civics. They play a key role in community events, PTA meetings, and school functions outside of the normal school day by establishing working relationships with school-sponsored clubs and participating in school-related activities. This also includes providing police support for large athletic events, and some of those examples were shared on the previous two slides. So, next, we're going to look at the day-to-day interactions between the central office level. We have daily phone calls between School Services Section and School Safety Office, where we collaborate, assess effectiveness, and conduct incident reviews, and if needed, after-action reports. Also, there is regular communication between the executive staff for police and schools, and they meet quite often. This includes meetings and communication between Lieutenant Colonel Linda Tony, Dr. Beth Tigan, and Mr. Lenny Pritchard. We have weekly threat assessment team meetings, which we determine how best to support students in need of a mental health service, so any student who may pose a threat of violence can be directed to services, including continuing educational ones, and diverted away from the criminal justice system. We work together to ensure the student is not isolated and is engaged in appropriate services. The SROs play a key role in this because each one of them, independently from their role as an SRO, is thoroughly trained in crisis intervention techniques. We also have our monthly student intelligent group meeting with police and schools and our counterparts from surrounding jurisdictions. The purpose of this meeting is to continue to support schools and community as a whole by looking at upcoming events to see how to anticipate and provide for safety and security. We look at the latest safety...school safety and criminal activities trending on social media, and incidents that are occurring across jurisdictions, and brainstorm problem-solving techniques. All the school resource officers attend this monthly meeting along with identified central office and school-level administrators. This meeting provides us with an additional lens we wouldn't normally have and gives us an opportunity to be proactive in our response and understand that there are situations that affect our schools outside of the school building. Also, police have a formal memorandum of understanding...I'm sorry, police and schools have a formal memorandum of understanding that has been in place long before it became a state requirement. The state specifies that the MOU must be reviewed every year minimumly and more often if needed. If something needs to be changed, we change it, and if it needs to be formalized in the MOU, we would not hesitate to make that change immediately. Then we look at the other things the police have done to support our schools that is above and beyond their day-to-day activities. More specifically, the support that has been provided to us by police during the COVID-19 pandemic. This support has included school resource officers being at each grab-and-go site through the end of the school year, as well as helping with technology distribution in the spring and now in preparation for our virtual start. The PAL officers also work the grab-and-go sites and continue to distribute money and awards to students during this time. Another huge component of our partnership is with the Crisis Intervention Team. Any concerns teachers, counselors, or administrators have regarding the mental health and well-being of a student or a staff member during the on-demand learning and during summer break, CIT has been extremely responsive and committed to connecting those needing support with the appropriate services. So, next, we look at the training, beginning with the Juvenile Services Officer School. And again, this was developed by Henrico County Police Department in 2015, and it is an annual certification required for all school resource officers. The school is a 40-hour, week-long class with a focus on providing training to officers on how to best handle youth-oriented issues. On July 1st, 2020, the General Assembly passed a new law requiring departments to provide a minimum training for certification and recertification for officers serving as SROs, which prior was not the case. Some of those trains included are awareness of cultural diversity and implicit bias, mediation and conflict resolution to include de-escalation techniques, working with students with disabilities, mental health needs, substance abuse disorders or past traumatic experiences, and student behavioral dynamics, including current child and adolescent development and brain research. In order for Henrico Police to certify their training, they must submit a timed agenda of the Juvenile Services Officer School to the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services, along with an outline provided by each presenter of their specific training. The police must also submit a sign-in sheet noting each officer attended the full 40-hour, week-long school. If this training does not equate to 40 hours or does not meet the training requirements, certification or recertification can be denied. Many of the presenters for the Juvenile Services Officer School are HCPS employees. Dr. Monica Mans, our Chief Equity Diversity and Opportunity Officer, Donna's Davenport, our Director of Exceptional Education, members from our Social, Emotional, Academic Learning Schools Department, and members from the School Safety Office have all presented in years past. Although this year, some of those folks presented, there were new training, there was new training provided that focused more on the most recent concerns highlighted throughout our community and country. Dr. Mans provided new train on unconscious bias and microaggressions. Dr. Bodis and additional team members from her department presented on the adolescent brain and student mental health. And I presented on school safety and the direct effects COVID-19 has had on emergency planning in schools. Even though the training conducted with the Juvenile Services Officer School is thorough, there are additional steps we know we need to take to grow and improve during this time. One of the first steps we took to work towards these new growths was the meeting that occurred between police and schools on August 6th. This meeting took place between the School Services Unit, the Department of Equity Diversity and Opportunity, and the School Safety Office. The purpose of this meeting was to set the stage for determining what it really is our community is looking for in regards to the police, community, and schools relationship. We discussed establishing roles for all stakeholders, increasing joint training opportunities, providing more community engagement opportunities, and expanding accountability procedures. Although this is just in the beginning stages, we are committed to continuing this effort and look forward to sharing the final product with you. We are also taking a look at the memorandum of understanding between schools and police. With the new Chief of Police onboard, it is imperative we take this opportunity to look at the MOU with a different perspective and ensure the growth in steps we are taking to enhance our relationship are reflected in the MOU and that we are also holding ourselves accountable to the standards set forth within it. Also, Lieutenant Colonel Linda Tony is going to sit in as the interim chief on the Chief Student Advisory Board to ensure students continue to have a voice and increase the opportunities for students and police to have those tough conversations. Then we look at what our next steps are. The Joint School Admin Police Training definitely comes to mind. This training usually occurs during the Juvenile Services Officer School and includes all HCPS school principals, their administration team, and any additional members they would like to join. It also includes all the school resource officers. It is a collaborative, day-long training, which is open to all department directors and their staff as well. It is a completely shared effort in which supervisors from the School Safety Office and the School Services Unit start planning months ahead of the event. As we work towards these new growths and making training opportunities purposeful, we decided to readjust our annual Joint School Admin Police Training. We decided to go back to the drawing board to ensure the training is meaningful and aligns with current topics. And we also decided to time the training with student return to in-person learning and building in on campus. Currently, the training is scheduled for the end of September and early October, but this will be flexible and align with the return of students to in-person learning. And now we'll look at the School Resource Officers assignments for the virtual start. During the School, the Juvenile Services Officer School, they've received their assignments for the 2020-2021 school year. The expectations of the School Resource Officers during the virtual start will include the following continued efforts, which is very similar to the level of engagement administration had with their SROs this past spring during our on-demand learning. They will provide assistance with grab-and-gos, provide training to staff to include safety drill training and training on gang awareness, conduct any assessments or providing feedback in regards to traffic plans or emergency preparedness plans, continue to provide support to school functions outside the normal school day. They will still serve as a law enforcement rep for their school's Threat Assessment Team, which includes assisting with connecting families to mental health services if necessary, and they'll continue to investigate case alerts from CPS. In addition to these continued efforts, the School Resource Officers will also work to provide engagement opportunities with our students virtually, such as co-teaching opportunities. During a normal school year, the School Resource Officer normally engages in co-teaching opportunities to include topics such as driver's education, health, and civics. This year, the School Resource Officer will increase these opportunities and are, in some cases, some of our SROs have already connected with their home-based teachers to set up these lesson plans. They are also increasing the number of after-school program and activities sponsored by the School Resource Officer and having them on a virtual platform. For example, the Law Enforcement Club at Brooklyn Middle School is being held virtually, and other SROs are working to do the same for the clubs that they sponsor at their school. And just as we ask our teachers to be expected to have office hours for the sake of our students, the police are also looking to have virtual office hours for the SROs. The office hours for the School Resource Officers will not just be a way to keep in touch with students and staff at each school, and although that is very important, it will also serve as an outreach program for them to be able to have those tough conversations with students and staff and be able to come to a mutual understanding for developing and building trust. It will also serve as a platform for parents to communicate with the SROs and a way for students and staff to exchange ideas and our information about police and community involvement. Once we move from Approach Two to Approach Three in our Mission Forward Plan with the hybrid virtual learning in place, along with the school staff, the School Resource Officers will return to the school, building, or in campuses for the remainder of the school year. However, it is important to note that as we see an increase in the footprint of folks in our school buildings, before moving into Approach Three, the SROs will increase their physical presence in buildings and around campus. So thank you for providing me with this opportunity to share with you some of the positive things the School Resource Officers are currently doing for our schools and communities and will continue to do for the virtual start, and more importantly, what steps we are taking to grow these efforts. I asked earlier in this presentation for you to look at how these efforts directly relate to our two cornerstones, and I hope you've clearly been able to see that they are not just evident in my presentation, but are woven throughout everything schools and police do together to support HCPS staff, students, and families. In the DCGS Schools Climate Survey Results for the 2019-2020 school year, when high school students were asked if having their SRO at their school made them feel safer, 71% responded yes. In addition to this, when staff and teachers were asked the same exact question, 91% of them said yes. This just continues to show that the relationship we have with our SROs and that the SROs have with our students is something that we should be proud of, but also something that we need to continue to grow. They play a vital role in school safety and in providing our students with life readiness skills. And although we are, we know we are not perfect, and there is always room for improvement, we will never stop trying. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Berry. Before we open up for questions, can Lieutenant Colonel just come greet us real quick, so she can just say something to us, if you don't mind, before we do questions?
I'm sorry, you said you had a question for me or you wanted me to summarize something?
Just greet us.
Well, good afternoon. It is nice to be here. Thank you, Mr. Osgood, Reverend.
Okay, that was a short greeting. I didn't even intend it.
I'd be glad to answer questions or brief you on anything that you had questions on that Courtney said or that we talked about at our last meeting.
Yes, ma'am. I'm gonna start with Ms. Consella then, see if she has anything.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. It's Lieutenant Colonel Tony, correct?
Yes, it's Linda, actually, but, thank you.
All right. Well, thank you for being here.
Sure.
Ms. Berry, thank you for the presentation. It would seem that we've made quite a few improvements to the program. I know when we attended the Joint Work Session with the Board of Supervisors at the end of June 2020, you referenced that. I asked the question prior to your annual meeting on August 6th, what types of improvements or changes or opportunities did you see with the program? It would appear from this presentation, there were quite a few opportunities. I want to better understand some of the threats that we do have in our schools.
Yes, ma'am.
What are they? And do they exist in all of our secondary schools?
So we get a variety of threats throughout the school year, and although that was a little bit different with virtual, social media threats are going to be the biggest thing that we have, and we have a team of officers that responds specifically to threats that we get on social media and decide how we need to follow up. And in the past, you may get a social media threat that might take, you know, 24 hours to conclude, but when we get a social media threat, if it's after hours, it doesn't matter if it's after hours and it's going to affect the school, we're going to find out that night, our road officers are going to contact the School Resource Officer, they're going to work together with our gang unit or intelligence unit, they're going to identify where it came from so that we don't have that threat actually affecting the school day and bleeding over into our school system.
You just mentioned the word gang.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you elaborate on what gangs do, what types of gangs do we have in our schools? And do we have them in all of our secondary schools?
So I do not have the exact names of each one of our gangs. I would be glad at a further meeting to bring one of our gentlemen. We have an entire gang unit. There are several people that work out of our intelligence unit, but we meet with them regularly. So our School Resource Officers, as a part of their training every year, will have new information about what gangs there might be. We will also send them information, let's say we have graffiti at a school, and we're not sure if it's just kids playing around or if we actually think it's gang members tagging things, we will send that information to the gang unit, and they will let us know if they think it's something that's involved in our schools. And I'll also say that our administrators at each one of our schools and our School Resource Officers, I think for the most part, they share that information. If they think that they have somebody who's involved in anything that they think might be gang activity, they are talking about those things so that they're sharing that information.
Do we think we have, for example, in our nine high schools, would we say that there are gang affiliations in each of the nine? Just for those at home that don't realize
It depends on what you're, you know, we have
Safety and security.
So there's a specific definition about gangs, and it could be someone who's trying to be like a gang member or to look alike gang member. So I don't want to tell you specifically about each one of their schools, but again, I would be glad to have one of our gang detectives come and talk to you about that, or if there's individual questions about a specific school. But there are schools throughout the county who do have what we call either a wannabe gang member or they have people that are associated with gangs. And so, yes, and if it's not necessarily a student, it may be someone in their family who's trying to influence them. So we do have that that sometimes will bleed over into our schools.
Now, when, I also know we have this student security officers versus the SROs. Are, sometimes, might SROs answer in normal, in normal times when we're in our buildings, might they address issues just to help with staffing, but it's not necessarily, I mean, it may be a code of conduct issue, but it's not going to be?
So in the past, I think that happened more often, and now we've established some clear guidelines where we don't want the officer to be seen as what I would call the heavy. They are not supposed to be brought in because there's not an administrator available or the school security guard is not available. The school security guard is supposed to be more there for the code of conduct or anything else that admin needs, but the school resource officer is there for criminal activity. And again, I know they may be there standing there because sometimes that presence just helps, but we don't want them to be a part of something that is a code of conduct violation. That's not why they're there in the school.
So is that, has that division of duties been made clearer recently?
I think that's been done within the past few years. I mean, we, it's been years that we've been talking about this same type of thing where we know that sometimes admin wants us there because it's just nice to have an extra presence. But I really feel like that division has come, and we have statistics that show the times that we've been called by an administrator, and then we may have seen that there was an incident that didn't necessarily need police intervention, and we've given that information back to the school. So we do have statistics that we report back on that.
And then the student groups, I mean, while 71% of the students support the program, 29% don't, but yet you've just added a committee experience. That's new, correct, that was presented?
A committee experience, you mean the different things we want to do virtually?
With the student, yeah, with the students, a committee.
Oh, absolutely, because we need to continue to engage, and there's, we have to make improvements. And you have to realize right now, we're fighting things nationwide, not just with school resource officers, but with police work in general. So we have things we have to look at just as police officers, not as SROs. So we're looking at policies, additional training. Are we doing things the right way? Are we making safe space discussions? Are we having tough conversations? So we want to do whatever we can because we have to influence the children from elementary to middle to high school so that we can have relationships when they're older. So we will do whatever, no matter what, how many people accept us and want us, we want every kid to have a positive relationship.
And then in response to, and this is for Dr. Cashwell or Ms. Berry, other areas, regional areas and across the country are discussing how SRO funds could be reallocated on mental health resources. Is this feasible to do and still keep the highest level of safety and security in our schools' communities? Can you speak to that?
Sure. I mean, I think there are a couple of elements I'd want to cover in that response. First and foremost is we've had an increased emphasis on making sure that we have, separate and apart from this conversation related to school resource officers, that we have increased mental health supports through our school psychologists, our school social workers, sort of our social emotional support system, as you, if you will, and recognize that in our school counselors, that they each play a different role in not only creating the conditions that promote better mental health in schools, but also being able to address mental health issues when they are present with an individual. When it comes to this idea of diverting funds, I'd say that it is some of the budgetary items we've looked at, such as the budget we were hoping to put into place for this coming school year, added 40 counselors, they're significantly higher than what we look at our investment is monetarily in the School Resource Officer Program. You know, this is a shared cost, so we put about half of the funds in for our School Resources Officers, and the Henrico Police Department is funding that other piece. So it's really a shared effort in order to fund the, I think it's about 35 resource officers that serve us.
Ma'am, my understanding there's 17 that are paid for by schools.
Yeah, so it is, it is a shared cost. And so when you look at the total cost of the program, it may be deceiving in that that's not a cost that's solely shouldered by Henrico County schools. It's shared. Some of that is provided, and we're appreciative of that shared partnership.
Thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you, Ms. Consella. Ms. Ogun?
Sure, I'll be, I'll be quick. I noticed what you said, Courtney, when you started, that two cornerstone, and if you look, we only have four, and you're working on half of it, and it's some of the most important work we do is safety and building relationships with our kids. And, you know, parents have tasked us with keeping their kids safe at school. That's just, that's the nature of some of the work that we do. And, you know, if we didn't have our SROs playing that vital role, and I know some communities are looking at defunding SROs, I'm looking at who would do that vital work? I mean, it would just be a gaping hole in our schools, I think. That's my opinion at least. And you talked about establishing that positive relationship, but so, so very important. Dr. Cashwell said that there's a shared effort for funding, but it's a shared effort with our police department and the SROs to keep our kids safe. It's what y'all are all about. It's the work that you do, and so many facets of that work is so important. So I'm very appreciative of the work and the efforts, absolutely. So that's, that's all for me, just comments.
Thank you so much, Ms. Ogun. Ms. Shea?
Thank you, Chair Cooper. So most of my questions got answered during the presentation or some of the funding questions Ms. Consella asked, so I appreciate that. I think it's just really important to continue to advocate all of our stakeholders, both in and out of the schools, about what the SRO's role is and that they are really there for criminal activity, not for code of conduct, and to make sure we continue to collect that data to make sure that they are following that division of power essentially, and that our administrators are utilizing them as appropriate. I think that's a two-way street with how the school, within the schools, they're asked to be utilized as well. And so, thank you for your continued work and to continue to have this conversation and figure out how we can best utilize, best train, and best build relationships.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Ms. Atkins?
Thank both of you ladies for being here. I am pleased to see some of the updates. I know in the joint session, myself, along with Reverend Nelson, really do have some concerns.
Yes, ma'am.
I acknowledge all of our School Resource Officers and School Security Officers and their work in trying to keep not just our students safe, but our staff safe and all the visitors that enter that brick and mortar place. But we also realize that there are some individuals that may need extra training or may not be a good fit. And so I am really delighted to see that, that enhanced training that you spoke of, that I know I've been really, really pushing on probably the past two months now. A question with that training around the use of disengagement and the use of pepper spray.
Yes, ma'am.
That's an area of still concern for me. I want to know if we've, or if you and your team have implemented trauma. So the trauma for that School Resource Officer in using pepper spray on a child, training on witnesses or others that have to watch an adult pepper spray a child, as well as that child being pepper sprayed. And I think, you know, having, I don't know if this is a part of your training, but I would recommend some sort of psychiatric, psychology- would recommend some sort of psychiatric psychologist, guidance counselor coming in to talk about well-being and what that experience is and the impacts, um, of trauma, when that type of escal, you know, de-escalation, because as you can imagine, you know, in my district, uh, in my high, in both my high schools, both my middle schools, um, I have heard from a number of students as well as staff regarding, um, the trauma of pepper spray usage. And so, I know that our officers want to do the best, but sometimes that does not happen, and I think providing a elevated level of training in that way could assist in reducing, um, that experience. So, is that infused in your training, or is that something-
You know, we, we would be glad to partner with schools because when you talk about trauma, I think about the de-escalation training we have and taking all those things into account before you would actually go that route, before you would use your taser, or before you would need a pepper spray. But similar to if a, a child sees trauma, when an officer sees trauma, um, on a call for service on the road, we make sure that they have someone from our mental health team or peer support to talk to. So, I completely understand what you're saying, and I'd be glad to partner with anybody in our schools where that would be a part of the school's follow-up-
Right.
...if they felt like students needed that.
Right.
That's certainly something they can do, but I just, I reassure you that I know we've used our taser before, I know we've used pepper spray before in schools, but it's truly not our first go-to, and it's one of those things where we, it's a continuous of many tools on our tool belt that we hope we never have to use, but I, I do hear what you're saying about trauma.
Yeah, I think that, um, I, I think the accountability is in multiple places.
Mm-hmm.
But I do think it's worth exploring a conversation, just as I'm glad to hear that your school resource officer also has sort of that well-being pulse check on the impacts of him or her. And so, I think it, it's good to have that conversation, to share that, communicate that out, um, because oftentimes, we may hear from the child, or at least I hear from our children in my district, I hear from the parents, I also hear from the staff, but I really don't know the well-being of the school resource officer as well. And so, I think it's a, a complete package, and the more we know about how we're taking care of each other when something like that happens, I think that helps transparency. It also will help build trusting relationships when you know, um, the human side of an individual. So, I just toss that out to you for your consideration. The other piece I wanted to ask was, you shared the response, uh, of the results from your survey. I think you said 71%. Is that segmented out by district?
Um, no, so that it covers the nine high schools. So, the, the survey was from the DCGS School Climate Survey for the 2019-2020 school year, which surveyed our nine high schools, students and staff, our students and staff.
Thank you.
So, that's what it was specifically, um, pulled from.
And I would just, because I know we have a lot of surveying we do, just for the board's clarity, because, uh, we do also, uh, a climate survey that speaks to some of the issues around safety, but the data that's been quoted here is the required state survey that's done for our secondary schools. And so, I think the data they've given us is, um, conglomerate by high, I don't think it's broken down by high school, but I, I will defer to our data team. If we have the data in any other way, we'll make that available to the board.
Yeah, I think it would be interesting to see, out of that 71%, how does that separate or segment it out by district? I'd be interested in seeing if 29% that said that they were unsafe were in my district, or if 50% was in Mickey District. I think that will help, it would help me, I won't speak for my colleagues, but it surely will help me in understanding and helping in my role on communication and being transparent. And, you know, just as you've shared the changes that you've made, um, over, you know, a small period of time, actually, which is wonderful, I'd love to be able to communicate that out in a way that's more meaningful for my particular district, and so, having that information, I think, will be very helpful.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. And that's all that I have. Thank you so much for your responses.
Thank you.
You know, Lieutenant Colonel, Colonel Tony, I didn't wanna say, first of all, that I am a supporter of police, you know that.
Yes, sir.
But, but I, I do wanna thank you for the statement that you made. That was a statement of, 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 in essence, the realization of the climate of our country. You know, even as I sit here thinking about it, you know, I was traumatized last Sunday. I don't know all the specifics of, of what happened in Minnesota, I'm sorry, what, what, in, in Wisconsin, Kenosha-
Yes, sir, Wisconsin.
-with, with Mr., um, Mr. Blake. But I know it was three months after George Floyd in, in Minnesota, and, you know, I was watching CNN last night, and there was this dialogue, and they were saying, for some of us as African-Americans, some of us are afraid to even call the police because of what's going on. You know, we, we talk about our rioting, we talk about the conversation that we're having as a country, but then less than four months later, another unarmed African-American male was shot dead in front of three kids. And, and I'm, I'm just saying that because I appreciate you saying that, as a police department, we recognize that we have work to do within our community. And I appreciate you saying that it starts at the schools because you're not just building relationships for, as my colleague said, Ms., Ms., Ms. Agbun about relationship building, in the school, but you want them as citizens after school-
Yes, sir.
-to trust the police, engage the police, appreciate the police. And so, as we go forward, this collaborative partnership, it's about consciousness, it's about cognizance, and it's about concern, that we have to be concerned as a community that I'm getting traumatized, many of us getting traumatized month after month, week after week.
Yes, sir.
His three children are traumatized seeing their father shot. He's alive, but he may be paralyzed for the rest of his life. And I'm not saying that that's, you know, that's, but that's a reality we have to do. So, as you go forward, as your team goes forward, as, as our director goes forward, it's important that that conversation is not lost. It's important that we are here to build those relationships and hopefully reassure our community that, that that's not lost on us as leaders, especially not my peers on this board nor our superintendent. And I just had to say that because, I mean, you know, you, you kinda triggered me when you, you said that word, you know, traumatized. I, I was traumatized Sunday. I was traumatized four months ago, you know, and I know you were too-
It does, it affects police, and I know I can't stand in your shoes, but it affects police too, and then we have to almost start over. This healing process, every time something like that happens, has to start over, and I wanna get back to where we were, you know, before, and, and heal together and, and not have another incident. And if we do face it, we need to face it together.
Well, I, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to do that, but, um, I thank you, Lieutenant Colonel, and, and thank you so much, uh, Ms. Berry, for your presentation. Dr. Cashwell.
Uh, I echo also the thanks to both of you for your very thorough presentation and the quick work that's been done, um, in this continued collaboration to make changes that continue to be responsive of, of what's happening nationally, but also, uh, right here in our own school community. So, thank you. We look forward to the continued, uh, work and, and updates as we go along the way.
Thank you all for your support. It really means a lot. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for the next item, I'm seeking your approval for a resolution for the conveyance of real estate at J.R. Tucker High School in the Three Chop District to the County of Henrico, Virginia, for the purpose of road improvements that are in connection with the replacement of J.R. Tucker High School. Seeking your approval.
Well, I kinda know who's gonna probably make the motion, but is there a motion to approve a resolution for the conveyance of real estate at John Randolph Tucker High School to the Conany, County of Henrico, Virginia?
I could let somebody else do it.
Well, no, you-
It's okay, but I'll do it. So moved.
It's been moved by Mrs. Agbun, is there a second?
Second.
By Mrs. Shea. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it, the resolution has been approved.
Thank you. Next, recommending the school board approve a resolution for the conveyance of real estate at Holiday Elementary School in the Brooklyn District to the County of Henrico, Virginia, for the purpose of road improvements in connection with the expansion of Holiday Elementary School.
Again, I know who's gonna make that motion. Is there a motion to approve a resolution for the conveyance of real estate at Holiday Elementary School to the County of Henrico, Virginia?
So moved.
Been moved by Ms. Consella, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Atkins. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, I'm sorry, all opposed, ayes have it. The resolution has been approved.
Thank you, and also thank you, Mr. Pritchard, for being available, should there have been any questions, and to his team and the entire team working on getting those projects, maintaining the timelines, and even, in some cases, uh, beating the timelines, advancing them. So, progress is looking good on those projects. All right, for the next items, they are consent items, and so, they can be taken in a block, so I'm requesting approval of the following. The acceptance of the monthly financial statement and budgetary status report for the month ending June 30, 2020. Acceptance of the monthly financial statement for the school nutrition services for the month ending June 30, 2020. Approval of personnel items. And approval of new members to the Henrico Education Foundation. And Mr. Taylor's here joining us this evening, and we thank you for being present. All right.
All right, thank you so much, uh, Madam Superintendent. Is there a motion to approve the following consent items? Eight point oh one, acceptance of the monthly financial statement and budgetary status report for the month ending June 30, 2020. Eight point zero two, acceptance of the monthly financial statement for school nutrition services operation for the month ending June 30, 2020. Eight point zero three, approval of personnel items. Eight point zero four, approval of new members to the Henrico Education Foundation.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, before I make that motion-
Yes, ma'am.
-I just wanna point out to everyone that one of the new members of the Henrico Education Foundation is our own Wade Anderson, and I meant to say that before you said what you did, but anyway, I'll, I will make that motion, so moved.
It's been moved by Mrs. Agbun, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Shea. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, the consent items have been approved.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. That completes and concludes any items I have for the board this evening, this afternoon. Not quite the evening yet.
Thank you so much, uh, Madam Superintendent. On board members, um, next item on our agenda is, uh, the approval of minutes. It is recommended that the minutes from the June 18th, 2020 work session, June 23rd, 2020 joint special meeting with the Board of Supervisors, the June 26th, 2020 school board governance meeting, the July 14th, 2020 community meeting, and July 23rd, 2020 work session be approved. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Been moved by Mrs. Atkins, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Consella. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it, the minutes have been approved. Is there any unfinished business? Um, next item on our agenda then is item, um, dealing with the approval of school board meeting dates for, uh, 2021 calendar.[1703.36]